...who've come to the club during their growing up years and now they're bringing their own kids back to the club for sports, for after-school programming, and for the character development programs that we offer.
Has the Red Ribbon Week, and this is for kids' sake, is this a new program for this year? Have you always participated in Red Ribbon Week?
This is the first time we've gone to this extent in participating. Keith has done an outstanding job in bringing this program to our kids, and this performance is a first time experience for our Boys and Girls Club.
They also marched in the parade. Did you get any feedback on that?
The kids are absolutely ecstatic about the fact that they marched in the parade. The reaction that they've had is fantastic. They really feel empowered and important because they were sort of put on display for members of the community, and they love it.
I am with Bill Kelzer and Debbie Ferrari from Coastal Castles Realty on El Camino Real in North Beach, our lovely North Beach, and they have sponsored this event. So I just want to know how you came to sponsor this event?
Well, I met Keith about six years ago. We mutually sold a house in Orange and tried to get him down here. He lived in Sacramento at the time, and kept trying to get him down
And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he
here. And finally, he married the gal that was in that house a couple of years ago, so he moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said,
moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know, moved down here. And he had done these events all over the country, and he said, "You know,
"You know, I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls
I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is I'd really like to start doing it down here." And I said, "The Boys and Girls Club is
Club is like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him
like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch like right across the street from our office." So I said, you know, we got him in touch
in touch with Alan, and the rest is history now.
with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. with Alan, and the rest is history now. That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved? That is great. So it's just been this year that he's been involved?
Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published Yeah, yeah, just started this year, and but he's got so much history. He published and produced the song that you heard. 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 and produced the song that you heard.
I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls I just want to thank you so much for making this Red Ribbon Week with the Boys and Girls and Girls Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all Club so special, and I think next year it's going to be an even bigger program with all with all the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. the press and wonderful PR that you are doing. So I congratulate you for that. that. These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message These kids are so talented. What a great way to communicate an anti-drug message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message to our school-aged youth. Let's continue as a community to reinforce this positive message so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll so kids make good decisions that help them lead safe, happy lives. Thank you, and I'll see you next time on Around Town. 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 see you next time on Around Town.
what's January 20. And, uh, we should call for your call. Study session. Chuck, sit down there. He reads the signs from that side of the room.
What's that? Oh, wait, you have one more on this?
It's on the agenda.
Okay, we'll have to do backwards at once. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Okay, the item tonight is vacation rentals, with Mr. Otamian presenting. A discussion of the potential zoning amendment related to vacation rentals, which was continued from the study session of December 3rd, which we had extensive notes on and a lot of public Unlike many of you might have been at a council meeting last night, which was a separate ordinance in regard to the business operations of it, what we're discussing is land use and some of the intended uses there. So it's kind of two separate subjects, two separate tracks, that we're hoping to get public testimony on from you here present, and try to distill the input from last night, which we got a little less than we expected, and from there go forward with staff to come back at a future date for more input on exactly what the zoning impact would be as far as vacation rentals. With that, Mr. Otamian?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Adam Otamian. Tonight, we are leading a study session regarding a potential zoning amendment. This is, as you mentioned, the overarching goal here is to allow for public input and more of a roundtable discussion about potential zoning standards related to vacation rentals, or as we are beginning to refer to them now, short-term lodging units, or STLUs. I wanted to start off with a timeline for a potential zoning ordinance, so everybody's aware of what we're looking at in the future for this kind of work. We would anticipate a fourth study session to flesh out some of the potential zoning standards that are raised, so that we can receive some planning commission direction, and that way we bring back one ordinance to a public hearing, instead of bringing a menu of options to a public hearing. Once that's done, we would draft an ordinance and then bring that to a public hearing. Planning commission would make a recommendation, and that would be taken to city council to introduce the ordinance. That's generally a three- to four-month period, so that's, you know, one thing to keep in mind as this process moves forward. The next thing I'd like to go over really quickly, just so everybody's on the same page, is an overview of last night's city council meeting. What was done was staff proposed administrative regulations related to the transient occupancy tax portion of the municipal code, the business license portion, and then two titles that relate to nuisances and enforcement. The types of conditions that are being considered for the, what's going to be called the STLU permit, were things like owner occupancy requirements, renter occupancy limits, having to maintain the property free of violations of the municipal code, use of onsite parking, notification to renters and guests of violations, providing a 24-hour emergency contact with a response, posting conditions in the STLU, and rentals only for the purposes of overnight lodging, meaning no special events, and providing a notification to all property owners within 300 feet of the establishment of an STLU. These are aspects that we would not be necessarily looking at as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, because they are going to be covered in the TOT portions of the code as part of the new STLU permit. They then received public comments, and ultimately no action was taken by the city council, except to continue the item, or I should say adjourn that portion of the meeting to February 2nd. So very quickly, since we are requesting some public input tonight, I'd like to go over what zoning laws regulate to help shape public input tonight, in terms of the kinds of information that we would like in this roundtable. So zoning effectively regulates the locations of uses, where those things are allowed, and separates, you know, commercial from residential types of uses. It also regulates standards which would apply to the use, and those could be things like operating hours, types of activities allowed, et cetera. But also standards related to development, the actual structure of the building, the location of the building on a particular site, and it would relate to things like setbacks and parking. And finally, it regulates the process by which uses are allowed in any particular zone. We have generally two kinds of uses. We have by right uses, which means they are allowed administratively. If they meet certain requirements, then they can do the right. They have the right to use their property in that way. The other kind is what we call requiring discretionary review, which means that a public hearing needs to be held, and there is a deliberation by a body such as the planning commission over whether that use should be permitted. And an example of a discretionary review would be something like a conditional use permit process. So with that, I've listed some issues that have been identified in the multiple public meetings that we've had, as well as the previous study sessions, as well as the letters that we have received regarding these uses. And I'll go through them really quickly, but these are the kinds of standards, these are the kinds of issues that we are looking for input on, what kinds of standards, you know, the public would like to see, the residents and the business owners would like to see to assuage these issues. So in terms of locations, we would be talking about zones where STLUs would be appropriate. We could also be talking about a certain separation of STLUs from one another, or a certain separation from other kinds of uses as well. We would be looking for development standards that would tackle noise issues, trash issues, parking, special events, lighting, screening of things like, I have screening and setbacks for pools, spas, and decks, but screening for those structures as well is a possibility. And then finally, if there should be a process required, and that would be, should a CUP be required for all, some, or none of these STLUs. So I'll leave that up on the screen, and we would invite people...
Yeah, just wanted to add a little bit to, because I don't think that everybody in the audience understands the different kinds of permit processes and what a CUP affords us. In addition to a higher-level review, it would go to the planning commission for approval, and it could be appealable to the city council. It allows us as the city to add certain conditions of approval to meet specific issues with a particular property. Because when you write code, one size doesn't always fit all, so it gives us more flexibility, it creates a higher-level review to ensure that the use is compatible with the area it's being placed. And then the other thing it does is it requires specific findings to be made in order for the planning commission and the city council to approve the project in that location. And those things are important, and it goes beyond what a standard administrative review can do. So, just for clarity. And as Adam said, what we're looking for from the group today is your input on things that we might want to be considering in this zoning ordinance, to address some of the specific issues related to vacation rentals. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Um, on the...
We haven't got our card.
And on the...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm supposed to come up yet?
Have you, everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I just had a question about what I just said.
No, I was going to talk.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. We'll open up a...
Sit down and wait.
No, go ahead.
Just a minute. Can we, everybody fill out one of the blue cards like you did last night? Or the green card, I should say? And if everybody will do that, we'll just call you up in order, and we'll get this done very expeditiously. Because we only have an hour, really, we don't have a, like last night, where it was on the formal agenda, because we have a, formal agenda starts at 7:00, so we really are timed constrained here. In that case, okay, Mr. Rock, this is for, you're here for the sign stuff, you're not here for that. Eileen? This is for the sign stuff, later. Huh? Yeah. Item.
Hi, Eileen. Would you like more?
Um, this is 8A? Hmm. This is for Valerie Hurst, you're here for the sign amendment then, I guess? Item 8A?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on item...
Okay. Okay, and your name, ma'am?
Gloria.
Gloria, why don't you, you're ready to go? Come on up.
I want to speak on the fact, I live at 219 Esplanade. I live, okay, I live at 219 Esplanade. My lot is extremely long, and the folks on Caye Toledo border up to my kitchen and my backyard, and I have an extremely long yard. There are four houses on the 1,000 block of Caye Toledo. House number one, on the north side, has an esplanade address, on the south side has a Cristobal address. So therefore, there are only two on Caye Toledo, 1,000 block, that have their Caye Toledo address. Both of them are vacation rentals. Both of them back up to my property. One has been a vacation rental for a couple years, nice and noisy, people on the roof yelling and screaming, in the hot tub yelling and screaming, and around the fire pit. The other one just became a rental in November, and forgot to tell the city it was a rental. They have been renting out, city doesn't know. I told Cecilia, and she sent them a letter. To make a long story short, setbacks for pools, spas, and decks. The neighbors on both sides are within six feet of the spa, the other neighbor is within six feet of the living room and the kitchen. We hear everything. I'm probably 30 to 40 feet behind. I can hear every conversation when people get drunk. They're loud, they're in the hot tub, you can hear them a mile away. That might be a situation that you want to discuss, the setbacks. Parking out in front is even more interesting. Both have a double driveway, like, you know, the newer houses do. One spot in front of 1004 Caye Toledo, two spots in front of 1006 Caye Toledo. They park everywhere, because both houses can get 10 people in 1004, and 12 people in 1006. You get eight cars in front of 1004, and another eight cars in front of 1006. Of course, they're not parking there, they're parking all over the neighborhood. Regarding trash, sometimes 1004 doesn't take in their trash can. It's out there for a month, until somebody calls. And, you know, you don't want to squeal on your neighbors, you want to have a neighbor, you know? You don't want to be a vigilante. So I just wanted to speak on the trash, the parking, and I have no idea what screening is. What screening?
Well, screening's kind of like setbacks and fence requirements to, in fact, mitigate what your problems are, to screen those items from.
Isn't that the same as setbacks for pools and so forth?
That, it plays together.
Right. Just one more, I have two more seconds. Because the, because the hot tub and the fire pit are so close to the neighbor, and our yards are within six feet of each other, you can hear everything, that might be a consideration. I don't know.
Okay.
But we've suffered with this for two years in one, and the other one's a surprise to the city, because they never registered. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Valerie Hurst?
Hi, Valerie Hurst. Just really briefly, I've spoken to you guys before, a couple comments. Number one, in R1 residential neighborhoods, I'm still perplexed at how these businesses are allowed to operate in an R1-zoned residential neighborhood. People have tried to explain it to me, I don't understand how that is allowed, it's just been allowed, is it just allowed because no one's doing anything about it? There are hotels and motels operating in a residential neighborhood, and as far as I can tell, that's the only type of business that's allowed to operate in those neighborhoods. I'm curious, I've attended city council meetings, I've attended the planning commission meetings, and I know it's a unique situation. I don't think they're appropriate for R1 residential neighborhoods, and I feel like we can't regulate that away. On the issue of coastal access, I know there are certain neighborhoods, maybe, that could allow more coastal access and more vacation rentals, more vacation properties, but San Clemente is also unique in that we have a state campground right next door to us that allows coastal access to anyone who wants to make a reservation. We have Santa No Free just a couple miles down, I've never seen that park filled up. There's coastal access for miles down there, so I don't think people can argue that they don't have any access to our coast here in San Clemente. Plus, we do have a number of pretty unique neighborhoods around town that allow multiple unit housing and different things like that, but the businesses being allowed to exist within a single-family home neighborhood is changing the whole fabric of our community, is changing the neighbors, it's just not sustainable. So what's going to happen long-term, in about 10 years or 20 years, is you're going to have more of these popping up and developing, and neighbors aren't going to be able to live there. The interesting thing about pools and spas, I have a wonderful neighbor next door, they have a spa, I can hear everything they say as well, they're not a VRBO or anything. I don't know if you can provide a setback so that that doesn't happen. I think if you were going to allow those in these VRBOs, it would have to be almost a time limit, like nothing past 9:00 PM or 8:00 PM. I mean, you can't, in the neighborhood situation that we live in, not hear every word when there's concrete around a water, and water is pumping really loud, and so people's voices have to be loud so that they can even hear one another. That's just my comment on pools and spas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Brown, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Valerie?
Yeah.
I believe you were getting to the issue of quiet times?
Yes.
What would be a reasonable quiet time?
Well, during the week, I mean, I have older kids, but they're typically in bed by 9:00 o'clock. My high schooler goes to school, his school day starts at 6:40 in the morning, so he typically has to get up around 5:00 or 5:30. My husband gets up every morning at 5:00 AM. So anyone who's loud past 9:00 PM, that's keeping our family up. You know, weekends, that's different, I think 10:00 PM is probably reasonable on weekends. I mean, I'm not going to be a grudge, we've sat and listened to parties and weddings at the VRBO behind us into all hours of the night. Sometimes we giggle and laugh, I mean, it's horrible karaoke. Sometimes it's not annoying, but when it is, it's terribly annoying. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
And I suppose you wouldn't particularly be amenable, or do you have a comment on weddings, if I could ask a question?
Oh, I don't think that they should be allowed to, first of all, the businesses shouldn't operate, and I don't think any functions should operate in a single-family residence.
Chair, I have a question, Valerie.
Yeah.
Some people in single-family neighborhoods like to take vacation and then rent out their house, you know? Do you have any comment about that, and how that could be arranged in single-family neighborhoods, and for how long?
Yeah, you know, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, it's a slippery slope, obviously, because people are going to get around wiggle, you know, wiggle room. It's always worked in San Clemente, where people have gone away for a week or two, or a month or something. I personally would love to see, like, if you want to rent your house out for 30 days or less per year, you know, go for it. That probably wouldn't be a problem. The biggest problem I see is people purchasing or transferring their home so that it is now used as a vacation motel or hotel.
Okay.
90 days, I know is what city council was recommending, 90 days is a long time to be next to vacationers when you're in a single-family residential neighborhood.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Tricia McDen?
Matting.
Matting, Matting? Okay, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tricia Matting, and our general plan and zoning plan, ordinance both say that the purpose of our city is to maintain and enhance residential zones. I know that in the California Court of Appeals, affirming Carmel by the Sea's right to prohibit vacation rentals in R1 zones, they weighed the factor of the property rights owner versus the city, in prohibiting him from renting out vacation rentals. And the court came down and said, in the balance, because the purpose of the city was to maintain the stability and the character of the city, of the residential areas, that took weight over the property owner, especially because the property owner was only being forbidden to rent for a temporary period. He was not being denied all economic use of his property, he could still use it himself, he could still rent it out, it was just the sum of money he would be collecting, not the fact that he wouldn't be collecting any money. Okay? In addition, for what we were just talking about, somebody asked a question about collecting the taxes or giving a permit, while the zoning ordinance says that it is prohibited under our zoning code, as I'm sure you're aware, because it's a permissive... our zoning code, as I'm sure you're aware, because it's a permissive code. And under our zoning code, and if it's permissive, that means if it's not specifically stated as an allowed use, it's prohibited. You can't do it unless, as he said, you go and get a conditional use. What happened was, San Clemente did what I know of at least three other coastal cities in California did. They went ahead and gave out ministerial permits with one hand, and at the other hand, zoning is saying, no, 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 you can't. Because a ministerial permit, which I'm sure you're aware of, all you do is you go in and you put your name, your address, and you hand it over, there's no fee involved, and then they give you back, it's pretty much to register where the property is located. Now, the courts have come down and said that, and even our zoning code says that if there's a conflict between like the permitting or something that happens and zoning, zoning always takes preference. It always wins. And Santa Barbara even recently, when they affirmed their zoning ordinance prohibiting vacation rentals in residential zones, they said specifically, we know we were taking money with one hand, and we're doing this. It's uncomfortable, but that's the way it is. And last June, they went ahead and said, you know, we'll give you to the end of the year, and then they're gone. Now, on December 8th, they were going to meet to go ahead and decide whether or not they're going to allow vacation, the home sharing. And they said, and they said, no, you know, on December 8th, they just said, we're not even going to go that far, because they looked at what happened in other cities and the fact that it's not controllable. You can't control it because you don't know who's there and who's not there. And I'll just say, in addition, if you'll ask about Laguna Beach, there's five towns now that recently went ahead and they put all these restrictions that you guys are discussing putting on the property, and have found that they don't work. There's too much money to be made, that people find the ways behind it, and that Laguna Beach said that unless you have a stakeout, you don't know how many people are there. You don't know whose car belongs to whom.
Please try to wrap it up so we can get other people up. Thank you. Yeah. With that, Jill Janis. And for you later, late people that arrive late, we welcome your input tonight, but we are kind of limited on time till around seven o'clock, so we have to be really efficient. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm too a little confused about what a business is. Across from me, I call it a resort. They sleep twenty people, and on the internet, they have pictures of this nice house with a pool and everything, overlooks the ocean. And I saw, I looked on, there's a couple of comments on there, and it said, sixteen members of the USA Surf Team and Coaches enjoyed this amazing home for three days of intensive training. The house is well-equipped for large groups. Went rooms, homes around the world, and nothing compares this one. We hope to come back next year. Another one, anniversary celebration. We were all blown away. The house is exactly as described and more. We had large crowds ranging in age from twelve to eighty for most of our two-week stay. And everyone agreed it's the best place we've ever been. I recommend us anything and hope we'd be back next year. Recently, a California piece of kitchen came, and they had two groups of twenty-five people come in and out. So we had twenty-five cars on our street, they left, twenty-five more came in, and in the middle of the night, car alarms go off. They get up at five o'clock in the morning to go fishing, so we wake up. So to me, this is a business. We like to live in neighborhoods, so I'd like the commission to really think about this, and why are these called businesses? And I'd like maybe an explanation why they're allowed in our neighborhoods. So that's where I'm kind of confused, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to leave you two pictures, and you could have them. This is what we have. Cars all around, red solo truck on the top, and another group with all of them. So I just want to leave these with you.
Thank you.
And this isn't a residence, it's really a resort. And if I would, if, and I'd also like, if we do anything, to limit the maximum number of occupants to eight, because when you, when you come to a neighborhood and have any more than that come in, it's, it's just nuts.
Thank you. Jim Lorret.
Well, I think a lot of the things have been touched on pretty well as far as businesses and residential neighborhoods. I've heard the argument on the other side that says, what's the difference between a short-term rental and a long-term rental? Which I don't think anybody here is against long-term rentals. I'll agree that you should be able to use our properties within the confines of what we would expect in a neighborhood. A long-term rentals, I've got one in my neighborhood, and I engage with the people. They come over for barbecues, their kids play with my kids. They're a family that is residing, because it's a long-term, they're residing. They're not lodging. When it's short-term, you're lodging. You're in the property for a very finite period of time. It is no different than renting a hotel. It's nicer, I've done it. I love short-term rentals for me and my family. I obey the rules, but that isn't the way the world works. And I realize that when I'm on vacation, I'm probably louder than I really think I am. And that's another point. Vacationers, even the best ones, even the best families, they're on vacation. Their schedules don't match up with our working schedules. The kids that are going to school, the kids that are trying to study after school. Large groups, the occupancy that the gentleman just spoke about, has to be kept to an occupancy, if you're going to agree to this, which I hope you don't. I hope you ban these properties from R1 residential zones. Because when I bought my property, there's a certain expectation I had that I was going to have neighbors, not vacationers. And it is so impactful to a family to have a constant flow of a year-round rental, no matter how well it's run. And I know some are run better than others, and owner occupied seemed like a common sense approach, because the owner is going to have some impetus. When they come back, they're going to have to answer to the neighbors. But what we're experiencing in San Clemente, because we're one of the last people to address this issue, is that we've got investors and out-of-town people. Not that there's anything wrong with being out of town, but if you're not out of town, you're not vested in the community, and you're not feeling the wrath of your neighbors when you rent to fourteen, twenty people that are here for a wedding and here for a good time. CCNRs in this town protect so many houses. I hear the 26,000 residents being mentioned all the time, and we've only got 480 registered vacation rental properties. Look at the concentration of where those are. It's all Southwest and North Beach, and that's one of the most coveted neighborhoods in the community. I constantly get people coming by my house saying they wish they could live where I lived. Little do they know what I live next to, but everybody wants to live in Southwest because there's a quality of life there, and there's a sense of community there that we very much cherish, that's being destroyed as more and more people come and make an investment out of a house. They're buying houses, they're not buying homes. I guess there needs to be a vetting process for some of these properties. A gentleman has taken, I've got a property like the gentleman's property there. It's a backyard oasis. It's got ping-pong table, pool, spa, rock slide, outdoor music, fire pit, conversation fire pit, and outdoor eating area. And I realize I'm out of time, but I really stress the importance of you thinking long-term. Do we want this town to turn into something like a Jersey Shore or Balboa, Mission Beach, where it is nothing but mix?
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Very well put. Moving on here, Susan Nelson. Followed by Roberta Favela. If you could kind of position over on the wall behind.
Could I just ask a quick question of Adam before we move on? The R1 zones, I've got in my head, I think the old residential zoning, like the RVL and RM. How does R1 and the other zones map to those? Is R1 equated to RVL?
R1 would be a residential, though, RL, of which there are many in the city. Not just their standard RL, but each specific plan has its own iteration of RL. There's approximately, I would say, twenty-seven distinct zones that are all an RL or R1 type of zone.
Okay. And the ordinance that council was looking at last night, does it only apply to R1s? Or?
It does not discuss zoning at all.
Good, because that's what we're.
That's what we're about. Yes.
Good, okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, you're Roberta?
Susan.
Susan, I'm sorry, Susan, followed by Roberta, if you would, is it Roberta Favela here? I'm trying to get some people lined up so we can be more efficient. Sorry, Robert, I apologize. Go ahead.
So I'll make it short and sweet. I bought my house in an R1 area, and because I wanted to have neighbors. And I understood that an R1 area didn't allow businesses, and that this is what's happening, and it's increasing at an alarming rate. And so they went over different ideas in this ordinance, and some of them I like, and some of them you go, well, okay. And there are so many loopholes in it that it really, really needs to be buttoned up. And when they said, you know, you could do a ninety-day, is that consecutive? Is that in the summer? Is that June or July? Is that in June, when my kids are trying to study for finals in high school, to possibly go to college and make a career of their own, but they can't? Because people don't just vacation on the weekends, they vacation all during the week when they're trying to study. So how does that impact? They said they're going to have rules that would have to be posted inside that house. And then individual houses can have additional rules. So would that include, like, if they're outside, you know, enjoying the fire pit and, you know, all that? Can you take it inside at nine o'clock so that we don't have to listen to all of that? Because the longer they're out there, and the more the wine flows, the louder they get. And we're a real close-knit area. We're packed in down here, and, you know, a casual conversation in the backyard is, it keeps you up. You can't really go to sleep with that. That's, that's the hard thing. And then it said they wanted to do two people per room, you know, and if you have a three-bedroom house, that's six, but plus two, so that's eight. But this is supposed to be a single-family residence, and I don't know very many families that have eight people. So, because otherwise, are they sleeping on the couch all the time? That doesn't make sense to me. So I think it should be two people per room, because that would be more, you know, workable number for us. Okay? So that was all. Thank you.
Robert, followed by Ann Goldberg.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Robert Favela, and my wife, Mabel, and I recently invested our life savings into building on an empty lot on Avenida Granada in the Pier Bowl area for a vacation home for us and our family. And if all goes according to plan, an eventual home for my wife and me to retire. Although the zoning is R3 and would have allowed us to build three residential units on the site, we chose instead to build just two units, a back unit and a front unit. The units are currently under construction, the foundations have recently been completed, and we are looking forward to when we can begin using our vacation home. Before we purchased this lot to develop it, we extensively researched other areas of San Clemente, and specifically chose the Pier Bowl area because of its beach town charm, access to shops and restaurants, and specifically because we would be able to allow short-term rentals for the front unit during at least part of the year to help defray the costs of the development. The back unit will not be rented out. It will be used solely for family purposes. Homes in other areas of San Clemente, as we looked for potential other places to live and have this home, were often part of HOAs, whose CCNR specifically prohibited rentals of less than thirty days, a restriction that would not have worked for us, how we wanted to live in these homes and our financing options. So we specifically chose the Pier Bowl area for this reason. I want to emphasize that, like most who spoke last night, we have no concern regarding reasonable regulations that help prevent abusive guests and would sanction indifferent property owners. However, as you consider whether the city should be zoned so as to accommodate or prohibit STLUs, I ask that permitted STLU uses in the Pier Bowl area be allowed more readily than in other more purely residential areas. The Pier Bowl area is unique to San Clemente in that it is actually conducive to a more vibrant resort-type culture. Vacation rentals in the Pier Bowl area help bring visitors and tourists to San Clemente in an environment that can absorb more visitors, tourists, and guests. And furthermore, based on my conversations with staff, it's my understanding that the complaints about the abusive rentals are not primarily coming from the Pier Bowl area. So although, so I ask that you please consider excluding the Pier Bowl area from any restrictions on STLUs, or alternatively, that you consider excluding R2s and greater's from such restrictions. Such an exception would be good for the city in ensuring quality lodging in an area that can absorb short-term stays, and two, to do otherwise would completely pull the rug out from under families like mine that made reasoned investment decisions based on what we thought would be a reasonable place to have a home that we could occasionally rent out and not disrupt the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Goldberg, followed by Harvey Goldberg.
Thank you. My husband, Harvey, and I are actually here to address item 8A on the regular meeting starting at seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, we appreciate that. Then Brad Higbee? Right up the bat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Joan Higbee. I'm Brad Higbee. Given some of her recent health concerns, I've been spending a lot of quality time with her, and I wanted to say very simply, we've been hearing a lot, particularly testimony in front of the city council about the business of vacation rentals, the investors' business, the homeowners' businesses. It's comforting to hear actual admission of definition on the record. It's a business, and in our view, it's wholly inappropriate for a residential neighborhood. Skipping all the other things I was going to say, because many of them you've already heard, I wanted to say in particular that my folks, like others, bought their home twenty-eight years ago confident in the city's legal guarantee they're residing in a residential zone, and that's changed. A year and a half ago, a house next door, absentee investor bought, and it's been a full-time, twelve-month-out-of-the-year rental. The one thing I've heard as well, particularly over at city council, is that if the city does anything, whether it's a regulatory ordinance or zoning change, it's government overreach. And with all apologies, actually, it's more a story of government asleep at the wheel. This has been something that's been creeping up gradually over time, and it's sprung in a snail, and it's quite a significant problem. I just wanted, I was trying to think of it last night while listening to testimony. In my view, I don't think the city would actually allow a restaurant to be developed in a single-family home in a residential zone, or a bar, or an actual honest upfront hotel. But that's what my mom's been living next to for about a year and a half. And it's not really to anticipate some of the questions or address some of the issues, something that can be managed or actually regulated completely, because it's a constant, eight in the morning, eleven, twelve at night thing. Sure, the property next door to my mom has an outdoor patio with a fireplace and a barbecue, and people are there for breakfast, lunch, dinner, afternoons. It's a significant issue. It's noise constantly. It's ten to fifteen feet away from her windows during the hot weather in the summertime when there's a lot of traffic there. She can't open her windows. She can't hear the TV if the windows are open. She can't sleep with the windows open. And whether it's a nine o'clock or eight o'clock or ten o'clock quiet time, that doesn't take care of it. It's a rowdy, raucous business. As others have said, vacationers are there to have fun, they're being loud, they're laughing. That's what we all want to do. Maybe not in this setting, but still, it's not at all appropriate for a residential zone. And let me just say, too, that a couple of other issues that have been mentioned, screening, you would ask, Adam, if I may, about some of the screening issues. I would actually argue against screening. I don't know if you've been in some of the vacation rentals, they've got huge ten-foot, twelve-foot tall fences circling the property with a fire pit. Once the vacationers are prone to be having fun, drinking, carrying on anyway, are there, they feel invisible, they're inside of a wall, they don't see anybody. So for the thirty to forty percent of people that might actually care if they're annoying or bothering a neighbor, they can't see them. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Brad. Lauren Kramer, followed by Gillian.
So I live in a R1 neighborhood, single-family residence with my family and my husband. And I unfortunately have been affected by these vacation rentals. And just recently, a new one was purchased right next door to me by a non-resident. There's three bedrooms. It's advertised on flip key to sleep fourteen, to accommodate twenty-five. The back, the backyard is huge. Weddings, bachelor parties are advertised to host there. Unfortunately, there are probably nice people that owned it, that purchased it for the investment, but it's affecting my living, my, like, where I live. So basically, why I'm here is I think there should be a ban on this. My bedroom window is right by the ping-pong table, like Jim, he had to leave, but he has a ping-pong table right outside of his bedroom window, and my kids have to study as well, and we have noise constantly because... study as well and we have noise constantly because there is... I'm going back. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. I just got in from Big Bear. Snowboarding all day, so my brain's fried. I basically though, have another one two doors down from me that also accommodates 25 people. So you add those two up, that's 50 people at every night. That's a hotel right there. That's a business. I live in a R1 neighborhood. I shouldn't have this business. They're banned in Seal Beach, they're banned in Newport, they're banned in Huntington, now Laguna. Our zoning code explicitly prohibits bed and breakfast in R1s west of the five. My friend who trains me in her garage was approached by the city because she actually had a business doing this with a bunch of moms. She wanted to stay home with her kids. She was a resident, has six kids and that's what she wanted to do to make some extra cash. And the city shut her down because she can't have a business in her garage. I don't understand the difference here. I mean, a 24-hour business, having people come in every three days and she can't even workout people in her garage for a couple hours? I honestly am for, I mean, she's fine with the whole thing, but it just doesn't make sense. None of it makes sense to me. So that's why I'm here, zoning. I think it should be zoned. I think the ordinance is good too for a start on the others. But for our R1, we need to save our neighborhood. We need to get these businesses out. So we have a neighborhood for our kids to plan and we don't have transients coming in and out who we don't know. I could have a child in the Lester next door to me. I don't know anything about them. Nothing. I need them out. So please help me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jillian or Jillinda? He decided to... Okay, you have anything to, you have nothing to say? Okay. Do we have any more cards? Jim Byben, Byber? Handwriting expert here. This is the last card. Do I have any more that wishes to speak? You should know better.
You might be surprised to see me tonight because I'm surprised to be here. I'm the person in question. I live on Ola Vista. I have two houses that we purchased that we lease out to short-term people who are visiting San Clemente. Interesting, when this took place, the city directed staff to compile a list of all the police calls that were generated by these homes in question. They generated a list of complaints, code enforcement complaints. And yet, all that work was done and you folks never bothered me. You never asked me to be here tonight. You never told me that this was being discussed. And the answer is, well, technically, on the head of a pen, the letter of the law, you didn't have to notify me. So the question is, out of decency, out of good government, out of making this process be inclusive, why did I hop in my car 10 minutes ago and race down here? Why didn't you bother to contact me? I could let my three minutes run out and we'll have all this dead time and you'll just sit there blankly and say, "Guess we didn't have to." And that's the answer. So in my neighborhood, we had our homes open. We threw an open house for all the neighbors. They love it. All their relatives stay there. Their friends stay there. It's been nothing but a blessing to that community. We've raised their property values. When we had that Petco or Furtco or whatever, the head of the surfing, the top guy came to surf, he stayed in our place. The neighbors had their potlucks waiting to greet him after he won the contest. He lost and they were all bummed because they couldn't go over and visit him. We've had so many thankful phone calls from people who had a chance to see their grandparents. And yes, you know what? There are rotten, stinky vacation rentals run by rotten, stinky people with rotten renters in it. Next door to me, I can smell the whiff of pot coming over, loud yahoos. And guess what? They're long-term renters. There's jerks everywhere. In the city of Orange, they had leadership in the city of Orange to address all the frat houses that were harassing neighbors around Chapman. You know what they did? They didn't ban frat houses. They came up with thoughtful solutions to address it. 30,000 people come to this city and dump millions of dollars propping up downtown. People benefit from this on the most personal level. People are seeing grandma and grandma like they've never done before. A woman got raped in a Uber taxi. And the moron aspect would be, let's ban Uber. There are awful people who aren't taking care of their property and the knee-jerk reaction is ban vacation rentals. So here I am asking you why you didn't contact me and why you're entertaining a knee-jerk reaction rather than addressing the problem which is controlling these properties by people out of control.
Thank you. Ann. Julia.
Hi. It's nice to see you again, Chair Brown, Commissioners. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so forgive me if I sounded a bit unprepared. I did speak last night on half of this issue. And I think frankly, the fact that this issue has been bifurcated in this way is very confusing for the community. I think you could see by the comments tonight that the public is unclear about what you're covering and what the city council is covering. And the interrelationship of those two things, I think, is pretty key to how this all works out. On the one hand, you know, we have people who are very concerned about the fact that there are an enormous number of people living in a home. I believe the occupancy limits was part of what the city council was looking at last night, not part of what you're looking at. But I think that's a very important thing to evaluate when you're looking at the zoning. So I, as I did last night, I would advocate that you have a process that begins the way the, these processes usually do, where you have the workshops and the public outreach and you try to involve all the stakeholders and get them all in the same room. This is wonderful that you're, that you're taking input from the public, but getting them to sit down at a table and brainstorm and look at compromises that can meet the requirements of all the stakeholders, I think, would perhaps be more productive. However, I know that's not your choice, but I did want to mention that. I do not have a short-term rental. I do not have an obnoxious rental next door to me. Several of my neighbors are here though, however, because they do have a difficult one on their street, on our street. This is a very complex issue and I think it's a very difficult one for you to evaluate, especially in the manner you're having to evaluate it. I would like to remind you, however, that while people are talking about the fact that this is somehow unprecedented to have businesses in these neighborhoods, it's important to remember that this community started out with vacation rentals throughout this town. It was part of the original vision for this town because it is a resort community. But that doesn't mean that it has to be a community that is governed by that. And finding that balance is the difficulty that you all face. On some of the specifics you asked for, Chair Brown, I think setbacks are something with that when the environment is already built, I think that's going to be very difficult for you to govern and it's probably better to look at controlling that with, you know, noise regulations and quiet hours. Commissioner Eagleson, you asked about what would be reasonable for quiet hours. I just came from Molokai in a VRBO there and they, that community makes San Clemente look like Manhattan. It is a very, very quiet community, very different from other islands in Hawaii. And the quiet hours they use are 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM, which seems very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Yeah, this is almost as complex as SB2, but not more. Are there any other cards or anybody that wishes to speak on this, on this issue? We have about seven or eight minutes before we go into the normal formal session of our agenda is at meeting tonight. Got a card and come forward. Or... Brad?
Yeah, Brad.
Dendelk.
Dendelk.
Thank you. And we rushed your signature, I understand. I'm doing a poor job of reading tonight.
Yes, okay, sorry. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say that we're a vacation rental property management company with beachside vacation rentals. We started off with my mom and dad's fourplex in the Pier Bowl, was inhabited by drug users and property was pretty, was pretty thrashed. And the reason we started was because my parents, who had owned vacation rentals before, one in Maui and several in Tahoe through my grandfather, I mean, I basically grew up with vacation rentals and kind of, and really an understanding of, you know, what they should be like, courteousness, how they should be managed and that sort of thing. And I think the, what happened is that the property was being mismanaged by about two different vacation rental companies here in town that didn't do a good job. And my parents had a different perspective and they said, hey, you know, Jillinda, my wife, would you be interested in maybe, you know, managing this property? So we start off with one VRBO because it's what we knew. I actually owned a company called National Director of Vacation Rentals, which was when VRBO had, had 8,000 properties, we had 1,000 properties and I actually ended up selling that company, which I hadn't, but about eight years ago. And so I've had different kind of understanding of VRBOs than a lot of people because I grew up in it, software side, was very involved in that as well. And so we actually had to take over the property because they bought this property, it wasn't being managed very well. And we started very slowly. So we manage 40 properties now, not all in San Clemente. We, we're in five different municipalities and we have been able to observe how different, different municipalities manage the properties, from Carlsbad, always up through Newport, Dana Point, different, different communities. And I just want to, want to say that, I mean, we're a homegrown business. We care about, we care about our neighbors. I mean, as, you know, we really believe in, you know, love your neighbor as yourself and that has been, always been part of what we, what we've done. I looked at the sheriff's report that we asked for through the Request for Information Act and, and we had police calls for, like, five times. Once was for one of our owners who had a birthday party at their unit and then four for a unit which we have no idea why it was called and we think it was like a peeping tom or something like that, whatever. We have no idea what it, you know, what, what the issue was. But, and then if you look at, anyway, my, my point is, is that, is that there, there's good management and there's bad, and there's bad management. The people who are typically the problems are the houses where the owners are managing it themselves and they don't do a good job. I'm sorry, I haven't had enough time, but anyway.
Finish your thought there and then we'll, I think I have another card here, so.
Okay. So, I think I lost my train of thought. But what, what's that? Yeah, single owners, like the owners that don't have like a process and a team to kind of go through that, they're gonna, the things are gonna fall through the cracks. The gal who was talking about 20 people and 25 people in a property in San Clemente, we would never have a property like that. It would completely fail. We would never even accept a property like that. So I think the largest property that we have, the property that we have that has the most people to stay in, it would be, it'd be 10 people. But we, on a larger properties, we check everybody in to make sure that they have the amount of people they're supposed to. We have regulations, in fact, that my, my wife said when we first did our regulations, she said, nobody's gonna...
Wrap up your thoughts.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. She said, nobody's going to want to rent from us because it's impossible to, you know, to follow these rules. And I said, no, we have to do this, even if it sacrificed our business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Monica? We have about two or three minutes left, so we're probably the last two cards here.
Okay, good evening. I appreciate you taking my card and letting me have a chance to talk. I, I think it's really important that we focus on what we're doing here. And what we're doing here is deciding what San Clemente's residential neighborhoods will look like in five, 10, 15 years. And I would urge each one of you to start with the exact vision in your head of what you want my neighborhood to look like. I live in southwest San Clemente. I've been there for 18 years and I've got three kids in three different public schools, which are wonderful neighborhood schools. And I'd like you all to have in your mind a ratio of what you think is an acceptable number of short-term rental units to regular family dwellings. Because I think once you have that ratio in mind, you'll know exactly what to do. We need to make sure that our neighborhoods are filled with the families that support the public schools and that support the love for community. And at some point, you hit a tipping point. And if we let that tipping point come, we're going to lose our community. And so what you do here is both urgent and important. And I really hope that you keep that ratio in your head, that once we get there in any particular neighborhood, enough is enough and we've got to do something to preserve the neighborhood aspect. My kids love that their neighbors are their friends and they go to school with them. This will change dramatically if that ratio gets off. So I would also urge everyone who's making a recommendation on this to be upfront about what your ratio is. Because if it's real high, I think the public should know that maybe people have different visions than they do and they'll really understand this issue. How many of my neighbors are coming and going every day? And that's what we have to keep an eye on. So I hope that you fight to preserve my R1 neighborhood. I hope you acknowledge that we have no CCNRs to protect us. All we have are city zones and I hope that you act accordingly and try and balance all the various interests. It's a difficult job you have. Good luck. I hope you do the right thing and I hope your ratio is the same as mine, which is, I want most of my neighbors, if not all of them, to be long-term families. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to close the public hearing because we're out of time. And, yeah, just a minute. And with this, I think we'd like to table this item, I think, till a...
Study session, I don't think we have to table. You guys are the ones that didn't get to speak. They're writing to us.
Yeah. Those that didn't get to speak, you can actually, yeah, you can provide it in writing through an email purpose or to the city planner and city staff is very good about getting it toward all of us if you have something, if you didn't get a chance to speak tonight. I think the procedure there, we want to just table this to another date, study session in the future.
Just table it to a future study session.
Okay. I have a motion to table to a future study session.
I'll move table this item to a date uncertain.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes 7-0, nobody opposed? Okay. We'll take about a five-minute break and then we'll get on to the regular agenda meeting. By the way, guys, here's a... Planning Commission meeting of January twentieth, 2016. And with that, Commissioner Agelson is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Petts, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Agelson.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Ruland.
Here.
Sheriff Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Good evening, everyone. We have no special orders of business tonight. The next item are the minutes from the study session of January sixth. If there are no comments or changes, all entertain a motion.
I'll move we approve the minutes of the study session of December twenty-sixth.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the study session minutes of January sixth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Item six B, which are the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of January sixth. Are there any corrections or comments or a motion to approve?
I will move we approve the meetings of our, the minutes of our regular meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Ruland and a second by Agelson to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Oral written communication, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not on our agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards? Okay. With that, we have nothing on our consent calendar, so we'll move to item eight A, Public Hearings. A time limitation for applicants of ten minutes and all other speakers, three. And the hearing process includes a staff presentation, presentation by the applicant, not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. And to facilitate this, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following enclosure of the public hearing, we'll respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss issues, and act upon the matter. Tonight, zoning amendment fifteen, two twenty-five, general plan amendment sixteen, zero, zero, two, signed exception permit and signed ordinance amendments, Mr. Shawn Nicholas.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Planning Commissioners Shawn Nicholas, project planner. This is, I believe, the, this is the second formal time in which these signed exception permits, signed ordinance, and now general plan amendments have been before the Planning Commission. Previously, on December fifteenth of last year, we had a good discussion in which I've tried to summarize, I feel, where we were at, where we were at at the end of that meeting. And generally, the Planning Commission agreed that removal of provisions of the signed exception permit moving forward from the zoning ordinance was all agreed upon. Also, limiting signs in the community to a maximum of sixty-four square feet was generally agreed upon. Also, the modifications to the political and temporary signs, as stated by the Supreme Court decisions, were agreed upon. And then lastly, adding the one particular section to, to the removal of signs portion of our municipal code, but there was a request that we would get a definition of change of use included. So there was three items that were pretty much outstanding from the previous meeting, which had to do with maintenance of non-conforming signs, some discussion regarding that threshold, definition of change of use, and as well as how do we create a twenty-five-year sunset clause into the municipal code. So I'm gonna hit on each of those, hit on the new general plan policies, and I apologize now profusely if I start coughing. It has been a long battle. It's amazing to think the germs that a five-year-old and two-year-old can bring home. So, associated with maintenance of non-conforming signs, the code and staff very much support maintaining, maintaining these non-conforming signs. As I stated, it's required in the municipal code, keeping them in a good quality and good working order. That includes painting, change of copy, electrical components, et cetera. In fact, I can tell you anecdotally that just last week, we approved some improvements in a change of copy to a seventy-six station, non-conforming pole sign on South El Camino Real. Again, just maintenance, general maintenance, received their permits over the counter.
I mean, the lights are finally gonna work.
Potentially. They were working on it, yes. So again, met this definition in the code, met all the requirements, got their permits over the counter, and we're out of, out the door. The non-conforming code section, though, is applicable, especially with the signed exception permit provisions being removed. So again, it's looking to maintain the character and design of existing signs. And that includes existing, maintain the existing structure and frame. So again, there was a question of that threshold, of that fifty percent, and consistent with all non-conforming structures in the community. Once you replace fifty percent or remove fifty percent of that structural frame or support, it needs, replaced, it needs to be removed. It needs to be brought into conformance with the code. It's the same as if it was a non-conforming home. If you demolish a, over fifty percent of a non-conforming, of a non-conforming residence with a two-foot setback, you have to bring that whole home into conformance with the code. So the non-conforming ordinance applies across the board, unilaterally the same. So it would be the same here. So again, we promote the maintenance, we support, you know, support them to be in good order and, you know, well-maintained, but there is a threshold there, and it's the same as every other structure in the city. So with that, also, the definition of change of use, staff had looked at a variety of definitions to be applied. Ultimately, we also felt that it would be appropriate to add a use definition to our municipal code. You see here before you the two provision, or two additions to the definition section that staff has presented. We felt that the definition here for change of use was straightforward, to the point, not over encumbrance. We felt it was very simple, but hit on particularly being consistent with the Planning Commission and City Council's past decisions regarding the removal of non-conforming freeway-oriented signs over the past twenty years. So we felt that this was a good addition and a good way to look at change of use. The third issue, the twenty-five-year sunset clause, you know, again, staff really looked at how to accomplish this goal in terms of the most simple way possible. And in terms of the provisions of what the discussion and what the Planning Commission wanted to accomplish, we really, staff really believes that the amortization process with that twenty-five-year grace period is the way to accomplish that goal. So what does that mean? It means that amortization will not occur until approximately April fifth, 2041. Why April fifth? It's approximate. It's what I guess based on the timeline of, you know, should Planning Commission make a decision this evening, when it would go to City Council, and then ultimately, approximately when this ordinance would go into effect, and then twenty-five years from there. Meaning, no letters or amortization process will occur until that date or after. We will not send the letters. Everyone, it pretty much continues on with their business, maintaining, you know, upkeeping their signs. Obviously, the other provisions of the code, as we discussed, will still apply, but no one will, you know, just go in and make them take down a sign if they don't cross one of the other thresholds as it is written in the code. So what this also means is that, and twenty-five years, April, after April fifth, 2041, any sign that, any freeway-oriented sign that exists at that time, then yes, we will potentially send out the letters, and, you know, some timing after that, letters will be sent out requiring the signs to be removed. And what that does is it further reduces that fair and just compensation requirement that we talked about last time. We also talked a little bit about in terms of funds and what it would be required of the city in terms of removal. There may be some funding that would need to be put into the budget in twenty-five years, should the city move forward with the amortization process. Some funds may be required for removal, but again, every situation is really truly going to be a case-by-case basis. You know, and the city attorneys expressed that even last time, that it is a case-by-case basis with each sign. So again, the amortization process, as we presented, with that twenty-five-year grace period, is the closest legal way with state law to reach the goal of that sunset clause component that the Planning Commission was discussing last time. The last component of this evening, and then we'll just open it up for discussion or any questions you may have with staff. You know, staff was looking at our general plan, and we provided to you in your staff report, a number of provisions in our existing general plan that, that are policies that are consistent with the proposed amendments before the Planning Commission this evening. Additionally, staff felt it would be appropriate to provide some additional language and additional policies regarding, directly regarding this type of signage, freeway-oriented signs, and the direction in which the city is moving associated with them. So staff has proposed a new, two new policies, as written below, and it would go under the land use element and also the urban design element, and would fit, even if you look at table one presented of the general plan policies, it would kind of fit within many of those policies stated there. So with that, this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to address any of the Planning Commissioners' questions.
Okay. Commissioner Ruland?
Hi, Shawn. I just want to be clear on the sunset clause. We talked about it in terms of pole signs, but it's also gonna be applicable to the freeway-oriented signs as well. Is that not true?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
But again, that's the way it's written. Obviously, if the Planning Commission wants to make a different recommendation, you have the ability to do so to City Council.
Okay. Commissioner Ruland?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One regarding the change of use definition. I just wanted to make sure covered how we use it today, and maybe this is a question from Al. If someone, like currently, if someone has a gas station and they change service pay to a mini-mark, that's considered a change of use, even though they're still selling gas. Would that definition cover that type of change of use, or if they added something to their property?
Yes, sir, because it has to do with the intensity and the type of use, and also has to do, yeah, that it's a substantial differentiation in terms of what it was there. Again, service stations, and now they're adding a mini-mark facility. So again, the intensity and the change is consistent with what we have been doing and what has been approved for the last twenty years.
Okay. And I also had a question with the amortization.
Yes, sir.
As I recall, when Commissioner Smith proposed this at our last meeting, we had talked about it being like, after twenty-five years, the signs are gone. In other words, the amortization would end at that point. It looks like, if I've got this right, it looks like the amortization would essentially begin at that point, and after twenty-five years, they would begin a process that could take potentially years before the signs are removed. Is that correct?
I think it's a, it's a terminology issue here. Amortization is just the process that, when the signs come down. So it's, the amortization process, yes, will not begin for twenty-five years, because in essence, with the grace period, it doesn't start till then. We're not even noticing, as I said, the amortization process, if you read the state law, Al, please correct me if I'm wrong, the amortization process starts when you notify the, you know, business owner that has a pole sign or a freeway-oriented sign, that they are being amortized, and, you know, they have so-and-so date to comply, and then there's other provisions of the state law that will apply, financing, so on, money, things of that nature. By doing the grace period, it gives, as you say, this twenty-five-year period, and then at twenty-five years, the, that's when the actual amortization process will begin. So at that point, letters get sent out, hey, you have, you know, a month, thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, some number of time period to be determined at that time in which to remove the sign. And then going through that process, yes, we'll start all of those, in essence, processes that will begin, whatever they may be at that time, you know, discussions, back and forth, what have you, will start in twenty-five years. So it won't be instantaneous removal, probably not, no. But again, in terms of reaching the goal of, you know, allowing them to at least exist for another twenty-five years, is what staff, you know, heard from the Planning Commission discussion last time, or at least the majority vote, to allow that to occur and then begin the removal process at that time, which, again, that time period is, will be discussed at that time, would be, yes.
Okay. So, and is that time period usually a period of months, like ninety days or something like that? Or is it, does it often stretch to years as negotiations go on?
Al has an input.
Mr. Sheriff, Commissioners, it just depends. It could be as short as the council determines, it could be as long as they determine. What's, what's important is that these twenty-five years, during, during that period, the value of the signs that are non-conforming that are in existence right now are being amortized, right? So what we're really talking about is when the abatement begins at the end of this grace period. And that, and that period, like I say, it can be as short or as long as the council determines. But the fair market value that would be offered for the signs after that grace period, right, during this entire time period, it's going down essentially every year based on depreciation schedules.
Yeah, thanks. Commissioner Wolf?
Hi, Shawn. On the non-conforming use, the fifty percent rule, is that a cumulative?
Yes. It says, I believe, the way that the non-conforming ordinance section is written, it has to do with, from a date in which the municipal code was, was adopted in nineteen ninety-six.
So do we have a way to track those?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we do.
For instance, this time, we changed the twenty-five percent of the frame- For instance, this time we changed the 25% of the frame, next time another 25% is changed, and that will reach the 50% threshold.
Yes, that, we have definitely, staff definitely has a way to be able to track that through our, through our systems. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks. Another question for city attorney. On the proposed revision of the code, page 4 of 4 at the top, on the fifth line, we specifically mentioned California On-Premises Advertising Act. If this is the only law that's applicable?
Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, I would be reticent to say it's the only law that's applicable, because signs are governed by the First Amendment, by case law, Supreme Court case law, Ninth Circuit case law. But this is, this is the primarily applicable state law when we're dealing with fair and just compensation for removal of signs. It's typical of a sign code that addresses abatement and amortization to directly reference the On-Premises Advertising Act for that reason. There would be, I think where you're going with this is that there, there aren't other laws that it would be appropriate to reference in this, in this code section. This is, this is the appropriate law to reference.
Thank you. Back, I'm sorry. Yeah, back to Sean. Attachment 2, we have a list of non-conforming signs, including freeway-oriented pole signs, and the last portion appears to be the oversized sign. Are they the proposed, a more, a proposed list to be amortized?
No, sir, only freeway-oriented. And we just wanted to be encompassing since, you know, as part of this project with removing the sign acceptance permit, it did include impacting signs greater than 64 square feet. While they're not proposed to be amortized, again, we just included them as part of our analysis because they were part of other components of the amendments.
Are this list to be approved at the same time as this code?
I don't, and process city attorney, I don't think that there's necessarily a list you're approving this evening of signs.
No.
I don't believe so. I think this was just more for reference for the planning commission in terms of our existing stock of both freeway-oriented pole signs and oversized signs in the community.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Blackwell.
Yes, so, forgive me if this question comes across wrong, but why on earth aren't we including the other signs in this language? Why are we just specifically citing freeway-oriented? Why aren't we adding, including pole signs or non-conform, and/or non-conforming? And non-conforming?
Again, it's just the way that staff had taken planning commission's past recommendations based on our previous discussions. It seemed that it would be, it was more focused, the amortization process towards the freeway-oriented signs. It seemed that the oversized signs are primarily located either inland or away from the, away from the freeways and/or also in very select situations in our community, and most of them are involved in master sign programs. So, very particular provisions associated with maintaining that, and then once those, if there were ever to be a change, the master sign program, probably those signs are also gone, so, you know, through attrition that will occur. But again, as I mentioned to Commissioner Smith, sir, if it is completely within the purview of the commission to make any recommendation this evening, they would like to, to city council.
Well, it's just that the freeway-oriented signs would, in some cases, include pole signs.
That's correct.
Other non-conforming.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if I can chime in real quick.
Yeah, please.
The focus, I think, of our discussions has been on freeway-oriented signs. The language of Section 17.84.040, which deals with abatement and amortization, is broad enough to cover all non-conforming signs. So, any, any sign that is rendered non-conforming by this ordinance can then be amortized and abated pursuant to this code section. Now, whether or not the council in 25 years chooses to do so is an open question, but if it becomes non-conforming, then it is covered by this, even though our focus has only been on freeway-oriented.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Eggleson, you've decided, okay.
Mr. Randle.
If we chose to put a 90-day period to take the signs down at the end of this thing, just to clean up housekeeping, where would we put that?
Mr. City Attorney, any recommendation? I don't know. I was trying to avoid eye contact. I don't know if, I know, I saw, I could feel it. You were avoiding that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, something like that would likely go somewhere in Section However, if the planning commission were to do that, we would have to think about changing some of this language to essentially give the amortization and abatement notice now to let property owners and sign, sign owners know that in 25 years plus 90 days, their sign is coming down. Because that's, essentially what's being proposed is, is not just a grace period followed by a possible abatement that's enacted by the council, but a strict amortization and abatement period of 25 years plus 90 days. So, we'd have to think through that, but it would likely go in 17.84.040.
Can I make a comment to that? I think that the intent, maybe, maybe we could just express an intent that the, after the 25-year grace period, that the intent is the signs come down as soon as possible. I think the reason for the 90 days or whatever amount is to give people a reasonable amount of time to respond, to hire a contractor to go out to get the work done to remove the sign. Can't happen instantaneously. So, I kind of like the idea of allowing the city in 25 years to have that flexibility to work it out, and you might even want to work it out differently for every sign. So, putting a one-size-fits-all approach might not be a good idea.
Okay. Are there any other questions with staff? If not, we'll. I do have one. This idea of one-size, avoiding the one-size-fits-all, is it, if we said something that had a shorter, a shorter amortization schedule, instead of 25 years, we say, you know, five years or 10 years, does that still give the city council flexibility to say, well, maybe this sign or that sign is right, you know, to remove in 10 years because of its age or whatever, but we're going to put off these other ones for another 10 or 15 years? Do they still have that flexibility at that point?
Yes, if you look at, again, Section 17.84.040, here we're in subsection C, the city council has, has the ability to identify a sign or class or category of signs to be abated, and that's when it becomes kind of a case-by-case analysis.
So, they could say, okay, the amortization's done, and, you know, just to pick up a number, 10 years, but, you know, for these, we're going to, we're going to start the abatement in 15 years for this.
And that, and that could be based on, on the, the previous useful life and, and the future useful life of a sign. There could be a much newer sign versus an older sign. It's certainly going to be much more expensive to abate a newer sign, a newer pole sign than a 50-year-old sign, so it could be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I'm asking for flexibility. I think, you know, if a sign's five years old, right, that's going to be pretty bad to take down. If a sign is 50 years old, that is closer to the end of its useful life.
Yes, that's correct.
But the amortization starts from the time you actually, whether it's 50 years old or not, it starts.
Sure. As soon as a sign is erected, then it begins depreciating.
Okay. Is there any other questions with staff? Then that will open up the public comment. And the first one is Peter Rock.
Mr. Commissioner and members of the planning commission, my name is Peter Rock, and I live in San Clemente. And obviously here, I'm to talk about the pole signs, hopefully that they will stay intact. I have a few questions for you, and of course, some objections. Obviously, I am against the removal of the sign, although the time period of 25 years gives us some sort of relief. I'm not quite clear on the change of use. For instance, if we have a doctor's office and it becomes a lawyer's office, is that a change of use? And more importantly, in the case of a restaurant, if we have a sit-down restaurant, which is, say, a diner, and it becomes a drive-through restaurant, and again, they are serving food, and they change the seating capacity and the demographics, is that a substantial change of use that would trigger the removal of the sign? In this particular case, it would still be a food service business, but it changes a little bit. So, I think we need a little more clarification on that. I would like also that the city would grant us the opportunity to upgrade our signs, to change the facing, to change the lettering, without triggering any detrimental effect. And also, the question of 50% change of use, how would you calculate that, as far as value or square footage? Because, like in our particular sign, it's 80 feet high, and does the pole area come into effect if we were just to change the lettering? Does the pole area, and it's a round pole, how would you calculate that? I had the opportunity of driving from Porter Ranch this weekend, and to smell the gas over there, by the way, but driving down, I knew this meeting was coming up. It was amazing how many pole signs there were in LA County and Orange County, and none of them seemed to me that we were too objectional. I would like to take the opportunity to maybe try to change the outlook of the planning commission on the sign from back to good. I know I'm running out of line. A lot of people depend upon us. We employ a lot of people at the restaurant, and the sign does bring us a lot of business. And it was previously mentioned that the I-5 is Main Street of San Clemente, and you're right, Mr. Commissioner, and we need to look at that to bring these people into San Clemente. So, I hope you look favorably on the existing signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Harvey Goldberg.
Yeah, I'd like to address the commission pertaining to the freeway signs, which I hate to, I have, oh, by the way, I apologize. I live in Marblehead. I'm the president of the Master Association for Marblehead, which is just under 1,000 homes. The vast majority, or a percentage of them, face the outlet mall. So, when you keep referring to them as freeway signs, yeah, but they also face all us homeowners. We're looking at them when they go in. And, you know, it's just like we all talk about water pollution, air pollution, there's light pollution when those signs go in. As a matter of fact, and Sean, you took a look at recently the parking lights, or the parking lot lights over at the mall, and there is light pollution from that, and we all see it. You know, this planning commission, I can't tell you the exact time, but there was a point at which there were supposed to be some very large signs up in Estrella, where they're redoing the shopping center, that used to be the old Kmart shopping center. And the city council commission stood their, stood their grounds and said, hey, guys, wait a minute. No, we're not going to let you get this big sign. The store said, well, then we won't sign the lease. Well, turns around, they signed the lease, and the city stood by them as far as getting the signs down in size. When it comes to the outlet mall and Craig Realty, I would ask that the city and the council and the commission think of it the same way. Think of it as if you're going to visit a friend for a birthday party. You're in their backyard, and all you're seeing is the freeway, quote-unquote, freeway signs lit up. We don't know how long they're going to light up. Are they going to light up for 12 hours in the evening, 24 hours? I mean, I don't know. That's something that everybody has to decide at some point or another. It's just like, there's an illustration that was on the internet of how wide these signs might be based on the structures that are there right now. Well, if you base it on that, everyone, I mean, again, they're going to take up the vast majority of the space, which is not right. You know, our homes are, I know I've been a resident here for 17 years, our homes in the Marblehead community range anywhere from a low $800,000 to a couple million dollars. It's affected their real estate values. Would you like it to affect yours? I hope not. And I don't mean that. I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody on this commission. I'm just saying how it impacts us and how we feel about it. I got to go back here and look at this. That's pretty much what I'm saying. I'm asking for this commission to just think as if you're a homeowner. I mean, I hate to say it, I realize that Craig Realty at some point or another will get some kind of signage, but just keep in mind the size of it, how long it's going to be lit, and how much, and how bright they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Goldberg.
My name is Ann Goldberg. I'm also a citizen of Marblehead. We talk about, first of all, on a light note, I think it's wonderful that there's going to be a sunset clause, the signs are going to get smaller. Unfortunately, it's 25 years down the road. I'm 69, I probably won't live to see it, but the people after us will, and I appreciate what you're, what you're looking into doing. But my main concern is the signage for the outlet malls. We talk about signs with a maximum of 64 square feet. What none of us know is how many, how many signs does Craig Realty plan at 64 square feet each to put along that long expanse of building that they have put on our coastal property? With plans to add another phase, another big wall, how many more signs at 64 square feet are we going to put there? At some point in time, we have to be able to get on top of this and decide what sort of visual impact are we willing to have our citizens have to bear? Because a freeway sign's impact does not stop at the freeway lanes. It goes on into all of our community and impacts everyone who drives down the I-5 freeway. Thank you.
Okay. Valerie Hirsch. Valerie Hirsch?
She was here for the presentation.
Okay. Ray Flahive?
It's Roy, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I'm not reading well tonight.
And last name is Flahive. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not reading well tonight, so.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Roy Flahive. I'm executive director of the California Sign Association out of Poway, California is where our headquarters is. We heard you speak on some of the issues that are being brought up tonight. One of great concern is reduction in square footage. Several times during the report, it indicated that smaller signs will enhance traffic safety. That may be true in some situations, in others, it's not. There is a basic scientific under-pinnings of signage having to do with the width of the public roadway, the posted speed limit, your ability to see the sign, read it, comprehend it, make safe lane changes, decelerate, and enter the property. When you take all of those things into consideration, smaller may not be better, lower may not be better. What it can create, under major thorough fears here, is the last second, quick slam of the brakes, pulling the driveway, rear-end collisions, et cetera. The thing we're concerned about is whether all the business profession code sections have been adhered to. Things like a full inventory in the city of illegal and abandoned signs need to be taken, and removal of those signs started upon, if the ordinance is going to be more restrictive. We would like to have our attorney included in the stakeholders group and be able to share with you whether the ordinance that's being proposed actually passes constitutional muster. I believe your city attorney has probably put some time and effort into that. It'd be good if we had ours, who's a zoning land use specialist in signage, be able to review this and give some feedback. Talking about adding other classifications or types of signs to the potential abatement. I'm sure the city attorney is aware of Livermore case, or the case out of Arizona, the Reed case by the Supreme Court, so to be able to classify signs as we remove all the directional signs or remove all the, we have constitutional protections that are coming into play having to do with content. So, we need to take a look at that. We want to become a partner with you, take a look at this, work on it, and, and help to write an ordinance that works, is constitutional. The city attorney had mentioned that the signs are a protected form of free speech, and that protection is afforded during the day and at night. Thank you.
I need you to take the cards.
We want to become a partner with you, take a look at this, work on it, and help to write an ordinance that works, is constitutional. The city attorney had mentioned that the signs are a protected form of free speech, and that protection is afforded during the day and at night. Thank you.
I need you to take the cards. Those are the ones that haven't spoken. I'll trade you. Yeah. Wait a minute. Okay, yeah, these are done. We had our cards organized here. Okay. Gregory, is it Gregory Briggs?
My name is Greg Briggs. I'm the director of real estate for Thrifty Oil Company. As I mentioned in the previous hearings on this critical matter, we own two properties in the city of San Clemente that have freeway signs. The 76th service station located at 1201 South El Camino Real, and the USA Service Station located at 590 Camino de Estrella. I'm here tonight, once again, to express Thrifty's opposition to the potential removal of Thrifty's freeway signs, now or at any time in the future. A significant portion of business for both of these service stations is derived from the freeway, and if you require us to take down or alter our freeway signs, we will be irreparably harmed. And any city requirement to remove or alter our signs will destroy the businesses at these properties that both so critically depend on freeway customers. We urge the commission to reject staff's recommendation to adopt zoning amendment 15-225 in order to avoid the inevitable loss of revenues that businesses with freeway, with existing freeway signs will suffer as a result of the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Adele Lux.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, distinguished commission. As you know, my name is Adele Lux, and I'm the proud daughter of Adele's at the San Clemente Inn. I was born and raised in San Clemente. I've never left. I started my restaurant career at Dave's Mexican Restaurant, now The Riders Club, at just 13 years of age. I do believe that San Clemente is the best city in the whole world. I am here tonight to oppose the city from taking away my sign. I have no idea why, all of a sudden, this city wants to remove my sign. No one has complained about it. The sign is in excellent condition. It hurts no one, and it's been there since 1962. I was told it was a quality of life issue, but it's there, been there for 54 years. What about my quality of life? What about the quality of life of my employees? And most importantly, what about the quality of life for my customers, the citizens of San Clemente? I don't understand why San Clemente is becoming so anti-business. At the last planning commission meeting, someone said, "The signs are made of metal. Living at the beach, the salt air, and Mother Nature will take care of it for us." I feel that was a very mean thing to say. I've done everything by the book, and I've made it through the toughest of times. Between the years of 2009 to 2011, four out of five restaurants in South Orange County went out of business. I remain standing, still here, still in business. And now you want to take my sign? My sign was approved when installed, re-approved in the city plan since then, grandfathered in, allowed to remain if no change of use. Don't you consider the city plan as a contract with its citizens to do what you say you're going to do? To change that without cause is a breach of contract with the citizens of San Clemente, the voters, if you will. Also, something I've read from the planning department, it suggested that we don't need signs because everyone has a smartphone. This is not true. Some people can't afford to have a smartphone. To me, that's discrimination against the have-nots. Besides, it's illegal to use your phone when you're driving. Customer needs signs to know where they're going. I'm baffled, me, how anyone could think that taking my sign away would not destroy my business and adversarily affect my welfare and the quality of life. As you know, my sign is located on Del Presidente by the street. My restaurant is located down the hill, away. If you take my sign away, you take away my business. It affects all my employees' welfare as well as my own. I am San Clemente. Ask anyone. This is the wrong thing to do. Please don't take away my sign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Crystal Dreyer.
I'm Crystal Dreyer. I live at 2119 Avenida Espada, which is in Fair Harbor. And I bet you can't guess why I came tonight. We in Fair Harbor have put up with a lot of inconvenience over the last couple of years with Mr. Craig's project of the outlets, and I sincerely hope that as a result of that, that it's remarkably successful. However, our property values have been significantly affected by that development. There are units within our community that went from having a partial view of the ocean and the hillsides to having a really upposen personal view now of the stucco facade on the Behemoth Building that's been erected there. Maybe it's unrealistic to think there'll be no signage. I don't know. That would be my preference. My view is affected. Many of the homeowners that are here with me tonight, their views are affected just by the structure alone. And our concern, I think, is having signage on the side of the building, I don't really think is necessary. I hate to take a different position than you, Adele. By the way, I think you've got a great place. But we recently took a trip to an area we were unfamiliar with in Colorado. In fact, it was just a couple of weeks ago. And fortunately, I do have a cell phone, and I was able to find out where we were supposed to go by asking Siri or Google. I never once tried to find Whole Foods by looking for signs either in there to direct me. And in this area in Colorado, they didn't allow any kind of signage like that, so I had to rely on, you know, coming right into the complex. Now, I don't think anyone driving up or down our freeway really would miss the size of the structure that's there. I think a discreet or normal-size green sign like they have at the freeway exits that say, "Here we go to the outlets, turn here," or "Turn here," I think that should be adequate. And I don't think that we should have to be subjected to having signs, especially lighted signs, that are even more strongly affecting our views and our quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, could you please hold it, hold it down by other people who are also speaking? Kathleen Armentur?
I too live in Marblehead and had to bear the pains of the construction and the overwhelming site once it was completed. Mr. Craig did a nice job. It's not as unpleasant as I had thought, and I spent many nights here at these meetings that went well beyond midnight, where you have to close meetings and reopen. But I would ask that on this signage, in the proposed minutes, or in the minutes here, it indicates that there is going to be consideration of removal of the sign exception permit. Is this the exception permit that was issued for Craig Realty years ago?
No.
It is not? All right. Well, I would ask that when Mr. Craig does present his proposal for signs across that facade, that the commission would turn it down. We don't need signs all the way across there. 28 signs, to be exact, I believe, is what they're going to be, and they're going to be logos, every different color. It's going to look cheesy, if, to put it in plain words. A big Nike sign, you know, a Carter sign. I mean, every outlet has the same stores. Anyone who knows an outlet, they're going to get off the freeway. They know there's a Carter. They know that there's, you know, a Nike store, and so on and so forth. We have to bear the pains already with the parking lot lights. We've been to the city a couple of times and met with Sean, and he's been very, very helpful to help communicate to the appropriate people over there to turn the lights down, to modify some of the shelters to lower the lights at night. They were running for 24/7 for weeks. Now, I don't know about you, my electric bill's gone up greatly. I don't know how they could afford to do that, but they have. So having said that, I think everybody's covered every much. Marblehead, again, a little, under 1,000 homes are being affected. Commission, I would ask that you please don't allow the signs to be plastered against this facade. And someone mentioned, it brought to mind about driving, the gentleman from Poway. Talk about looking to see if your stores happens to be here, driving down the freeway. I can just see everybody looking to see exactly what stores are there by looking at the facade. Talk about accidents happening between Hermosa and Pico. Here we go. We don't want that. It's a safety issue as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Francisco Cosey? Did I butcher that like the rest? We have more?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm back again, to talk again. I'm going to touch on a few things that I talked about last time, first of all, for anyone, the citizens that weren't at the last meeting. My name is Lisa Francesconi, and I have had the honor of representing two businesses in San Clemente that are responsible for 5,000 homeowners and about $150,000 a year in TOT tax that goes directly to the city. And I'd like to thank the citizens for showing up tonight, because I think that the one thing that makes our community so great is our citizens, obviously. I mean, it's one of the great threads throughout, whether you drive, you're from Marblehead or down to Cypress Shores, we have the greatest community in the area. That, I think, we're all in agreement on that. But I'm here tonight to represent the business side of it. I represent, as I said, 4,800 homeowners at my one property and another 250 at my second property, which is located near the pier. We are concerned about our pole sign, as my restaurateur, Adele Lux, hit on. Yes, we know our pole sign has been grandfathered in, and it's been here a very long time. We do have an unusual situation in the large property, the San Clemente Inn, that I represent because of the fact that it does grade down to the ocean, and our backyard is a state park. And without that signage, we do disappear, and any of you can drive by there at night, and you can see where we grade down, and we do, we will essentially disappear if that sign's removed. We are, the other thing that is important to the clients that I represent is that we have a $4.2 million budget annually that I'm responsible for balancing. Of that budget, $1.4 million of it is required for me to do a net number to transient use, which is nightly rentals, for those of you that aren't familiar with what I do at the San Clemente Inn. And it's essential for us to balance our budget and be able to maintain an even maintenance fee to the 5,000 owners that I represent. We are currently in the process, through city building permits, to do $3 million worth of improvements. 41 units this year, as well as my lobby and my rec room. My business representatives that I'm here on behalf of are reinvesting in an asset that's been there since 1955, when the Champlin Oil Family and the Winchester Rifle Company originally built the first building of that property, and their landmark petroleum gas station, which is on a vacant lot right now, which I believe is going to be built out soon, which we're happy about. I too have my own personal 25-year sunset clause, and I won't be here in 25 years, but I'm ultimately accountable for where the city is going and how it will affect my successor, who's here tonight. He's much younger, smarter, and attractive than me, and so I am concerned about where we're going. I do know for a fact that I did do some research prior to coming tonight, and I do know that the current value for me to remove my existing sign would be $35,000. And I know that because I am also a co-owner of a local general contracting company here in town with my husband, as well as representing the San Clemente Inn. So I thank you for your time, and I thank the citizens for showing up tonight as well.
Thank you. Scott Williams, representing San Clemente Shell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to speak on behalf of San Clemente Shell. I would like to go to, at your attachment number two, this issue about freeway-oriented signs and freeway visual signs. I think that is so vague that it needs to be changed to make it clear. It's come up here tonight, and it's confusing. We would agree that a sign is speech. It's asking customers to come in and do business with me. So if you're saying, "I've got a pole sign, and I'm asking customers to come in, and you're going to eliminate my sign, which reduces my volume of business, which reduces revenue, and reduces employees that I need," okay, that's all that's going to happen. And it's also going to affect your business. If we do over $3 million a year, and you've got 13 or 14, you end up with about $21 million or more. You get about 1% of that, about $200,000. So if you drop the revenues by eliminating the signs by, let's say, 25 to 30%, you can see the hurt on the income that you get. Now, you'll have some offsets, but at the same time, your retirement benefits are going up for the city, probably $25,000, $30,000 a year. So you need the business. We need the business. The clarification that I think we need is a sign is made to be visible to customers. You're saying that we're going to treat pole signs, because they're pole signs, different than a freeway-oriented sign. And in your attachment, you don't make a distinction. On your attachment, you say freeway-oriented signs, and you show pictures from motels, hotels, and then the pole signs. You don't distinguish it. So it's inconsistent with what you're trying to do. The other thing, if I understand, the city attorney said that the new development, that you have a development contract with the project, and I assume they're all going to be freeway-oriented signs. Now, that was in the register. It could be wrong. So your development agreement locks in freeway-oriented signs, so you don't want to touch, okay, maybe they were wrong. But they did say at the meeting last time here, that whatever's going, you've locked in whatever's going to happen at that development. So again, I would like the definition of freeway visual signs and freeway pole signs are exactly the same. Treat them alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, Hiram DeFries.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Hiram DeFries, and I'm here on behalf of Terry Davis and Dennis Graves, the property owners at San Clemente Shell. Just for clarification, I'm also an attorney, and I am also the dealer at San Clemente And I can tell you that that sign is very essential to our well-being and being able to conduct a viable business. I did want to get into the use part and the change of use, because as you start to look out in the future, I mean, are we talking about a business that caters to automobiles or moving customers? Because as we project in the future, the fuel will change. And... And I retired from Shell Oil Company after 40 years, and as we look out, we can see that there are going to be changes that are coming up, and we just, I just want to make sure that the ability to change, to go along with these fuels, we're going to go into biofuels, we're going to go into hydrogen, we're going to go into a lot of different kinds of fuels, and all of this is going to require signage. So is that a change in use? You know, hopefully, it isn't. Okay? Because, you know, these are all fuels of the future, and they have to be taken into One of the other things that, specific to that particular location, and most locations on freeways, I can tell you that, you know, customer after customer will come in, and when that checkpoint is closed for a long period of time, and then it's reopened, they come up there with a roar, and they're looking for someplace, you know, that they can, that can go to meet their needs. And we're there, you know, to service their needs. And I can tell you, when we had that fire a couple of years ago, and the San Clemente Police were down there, "Do not close the station. We must get people evacuated out of here." They were pouring through there. The sign was critical for them. That sign was absolutely critical. Without that sign, they would have nowhere to go. So there's, there is an, there is a benefit to having that, and please don't take that away from that, that location and others within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards?
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners. Jennifer Oden, on behalf of Tesoro Corporation. Tesoro Corporation is the long-term lesssee of a USA gasoline station here in the city of San Clemente, located at 590 Camino de Australia. I was present at the December Planning Commission meeting, voiced our concerns at that time. The concerns remain the same, or similar to those that were voiced in December. First, Tesoro is opposed to the proposed elimination of the sign exception permit. However, if this planning commission does vote to approve the resolution removing the sign exception permit, then we would request the no amortization or grace period, simply that it is deemed illegal non-conforming use, which, what I understand, has typically been done by the city, as reflected in the city's Planning Department staff report back from December, that that usually is the process that is done, is deemed legal non-conforming use, and is governed under the city's municipal code related to that section. But if this planning commission does think that a grace period or amortization period is necessary, then we would request nothing, certainly nothing less than the 25 years that has been proposed by staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think one more card just was delivered here. Richard Boyer.
Hello, planning commissioners. My name's Richard Boyer. I am a San Clemente resident. Served on the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I'm the president of the Citizens Group that met the city three times in court over an inappropriate sign exception permit for the outlet mall in 2008, when we prevailed all three times, and we recovered fees and costs, because we provided a substantial benefit to the public, and we vindicated an important right. When it comes down to what we ought to be doing, if anybody has not referred to this source document, this is the, what the general plan's based on, the San Clemente Vision and Strategic Plan, December 2009, it makes it very clear, residents consider this quality of life community. My comment would be, please be aware, be wary of the classic mistake of confusing money with quality of life. And I've got a, I don't know where I got this, I apologize, but something that I clipped a while ago. An inspirational thought from William F. Buckley Jr., who is remembered as the intellectual father of modern conservatism, who also cared deeply about the integrity of America's landscapes and cityscapes. Buckley was a prolific writer, and more than once, he expressed his disdain for those who deprecated the public realm with their signs, as if they had some inherent right to do so. Buckley observed that those responsible for sign pollution, quote, "survive primarily through political pressures and manipulations," end quote. And that quote comes from an article titled "The Politics of Beauty," published in 1966. In that same article, he asserts that such instances, quote, "are acts of aggression against which the public is entitled, as a matter of privacy, to be protected." And then he follows with an example. "If a homeowner desires to construct a huge Coca-Cola sign facing his own homestead rather than the public highway, in order to remind him every time he looks out his window that the time has come to pause and be refreshed, he certainly should be left free to do so. But if he wants to face the sign towards us, that is something else." Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the last of the cards. Oh, one more, racing to the wire, okay? Okay, this is, Etta?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, ladies and gentlemen. I represent San Clemente Valero, which is off the Polizano Freeway. It sits 75 feet below the freeway. The value of our business depends immensely on our sign, so much so that to remove the sign, it would affect the livelihood of myself, my father, and all the employees who work for us financially. I wanted to take a moment and enlighten the members of this planning commission of the California Code, from the Business and Profession Code, Section 5499, which states, "Regardless of any other provision of this chapter or other law, no city or county shall require the removal of any on-premise advertising display on the basis of its height or size by requiring conformance with any ordinance or regulation introduced and adopted on or after March 12, 1983, if special topographic circumstances will result in a material impairment of visibility of the display or the owner's or user's ability to adequately and effectively continue to communicate with the public through the use of the display. Under these circumstances, the owner or user may maintain the advertising display at the business premise and at location necessary for continued public visibility at the height or size at which display was previously erected, and in doing so, the owner or user is in conformance." So lastly, the newly proposed Section 17.84.28.11 ostensibly requires a removal or modification of pole signs protected under the Section 5499 upon a change in use. The protection of the state statute do not end upon a change of use or other city-defined criteria. Respectfully, subsection 8 should be eliminated or made expressly subject to Section 5499. I wanted to reiterate what other sign owners here have stated, in that having a sign used to advertise our business is our right, as is the right of religious institutions to erect religious symbols on their property, as is the right as homeowners to place Christmas lights or other nativity scenes on their home. It is their right to express their views. It is our right to erect a sign for our business, for the livelihood of our family, for the livelihood of the people who work for us. Thank you for giving me this forum.
Thank you. City Attorney, like to comment on some of those, that California ordinance?
Sure, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. I assume you're referring to the BNP Code, Section 5499. So that, that was accurately summarized. That refers to the regulatory removal of a sign on the basis of height or size. The ordinance before the planning commission this evening would require removal of all signs regardless of height or size. They are freeway-oriented signs, that's the criterion, that would require removal. So it would not trigger Section 5499.
Thank you. That'll also close the public hearing and invite discussion. Mr. Eggleston, you can hardly wait.
Thank you. I think we need some clarification with regard to the outlet mall and the proposed signs for there. When I was on city council, we did pass the development agreement at that time, but it says, in that agreement, because I just got through reading it again, that it excludes any signs as part of that agreement. So I think it's, we need some clarification on that.
Staff reviewed the development agreement with the city attorney, and based on that review and that assessment, the Craig Realty Group, per the development agreement, is able to proceed forward and apply for a sign exception permit. Whatever decisions were to be made by planning commission this evening and/or city council subsequently, assuming that the development agreement is still in effect, Craig Realty Group would still be allowed to move forward with their request. So they would still be, and they have submitted an application for a sign exception permit consistent with the code as it is today. And we will process it and, you know, evaluate it independently, associated with the required findings, and after that process, submit to planning commission for, obviously, determination at that time. The application is incomplete, and we have not received a resubmital at this time.
All right, thank you. So to be clear, then, they are, this development agreement only allows them to apply for the signs?
That's correct, sir. They can have the ability to apply, and it goes through the same discretionary process as, as it exists today.
Okay, or?
It is not, no, no approval is guaranteed. They have to go through the process the same as anyone would have to. They're just allowed the opportunity to apply.
Thank you.
If I may chime in, just briefly, since this came up during comments as well, the development agreement pursuant to the government code vests the developer who has signed it with the right to develop pursuant to the code that was in place when the DA was signed. So tonight's action, for better or worse, won't have any impact on Craig Realty's ability to apply for a sign exception permit. This, this wouldn't apply to them, because they're vested with the pre-existing code.
So they will be allowed to apply based on the ordinance in effect at the time?
When the development agreement was signed. That's correct.
Which is the code as it exists today.
Today.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Mr. Grant.
On that very, I'm really confused here. So Craig Realty can apply, it has to be evaluated by the code, that they did the, how's that any different than any other sign owner that was approved? That's already approved?
Well, the development agreement said that, in fact, that the signs were not part of the development agreement at that time. But they are allowed to proceed.
But they have to be evaluated on the old rules?
Yes, yes.
But we're saying these existing owners of signs, who were approved by the old rules, don't have that right?
That's for the city attorney.
So development agreements are permitted by the government code, and it's a contract between a city and a private, a private party, a developer. When that development agreement is signed, it basically freezes in place the zoning ordinance, the ordinances and laws that are in place when, when it's signed. So, for example, tonight's action will render existing pole signs, existing freeway-oriented signs, non-conforming, right? And, and no business owner, owner who doesn't have that kind of a sign at this point can come in for a sign exception permit for a freeway-oriented sign. That possibility is now erased. If they had a development agreement in place that was signed, say, five years ago, even six months ago, then the code is frozen for them in place, and what we do going forward does not affect their development rights. That's how it's laid out in the California government code.
And that, but that only lasts for another couple of years, is that correct? The development agreement?
Yes, sir. The development agreement will sunset, and at that point, they couldn't make, they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be held to that contract. A question for the attorney, though, is hypothetically, if, if a developer comes in under a development agreement, gets an approval, and that approval then becomes non-conforming because of existing code, would they be held to the amortization requirements of the sunset? It depends, it depends in part on the language of the development agreement. But if, if, for example, five years ago, a, a different developer had applied for and received a sign exception permit for a freeway-oriented sign, and the city then adopted this ordinance, it's likely that they would be in the exact same boat as all other owners and operators of freeway-oriented signs. They have the right to develop under the existing zoning code, but then that, that code, once developed, can change and, and can render the development potentially legal non-conforming. It's going to be a case-by-case analysis pursuant to the language of the development agreement. Again, that's a contract, and that language can supersede potentially the city's ordinances, and especially freeze it in place or vest those rights for the developer.
Commissioner Wu?
I will.
Would you like to discuss some issues?
Yes, a question for city attorney. Now, we talk about flexibility to give the city council to take action, as they will after 25 years of grace period. But if we don't have that amortization, or if we don't have that grace period at 25 years, and the city can still take action anytime they want, so my standing, my understanding is if we have this 25-year grace, grace period, it actually limits the city's capability to take any action against these non-conforming users. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for that 25-year period, that ability would be limited. That's correct.
But if we don't have this grace period, and we can take action anytime we want, the city can take?
That's, that's correct, subject to following the procedural requirements, but that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I, a little bit tangential, let's start off with, but a number of people had mentioned, talked about light pollution from the, from the outlet malls. I just really wanted to give you an FYI. The city council has asked us to form a subcommittee, and in fact, the three of us are on that subcommittee, to look at a new lighting ordinance. So we'll be looking at that this year. You're certainly welcome to check the city website when our meetings are. We plan to meet roughly once a month. We've just formed up and just had our first meeting, so we're right at the beginning of the process. So if you're interested in that, certainly, that might be something you want to look into on the city website and perhaps provide your input. Regarding the, specifically the freeway sign, I think, you know, it's a tough issue, because, you know, we've been talking and getting a lot of input, and of course, the business people are very concerned about their loss of business. There's a very reasonable fear with that. But, you know, as we're going forward and like, looking at doing some ordinance, I, I, you know, one fear that we, that I have, and I think that we should have, is, you know, are we basing the ordinance on, you know, facts and figures or on our worst fears? And I, you know, while there's been many claims that the businesses will suffer if they remove the signs, that go out of business, again, reasonable fear, reasonable concern, but there's been no evidence provided of how that would happen, of how, how much of their business actually is coming in from the freeway or anything, as claims, but no, no evidence. What we do have evidence for, though, is that since we put the current regulations into effect and people have had to remove their signs over the last 30 years, based on information from staff, no one has gone out of business. So in my mind, you know, on the one hand, it's like, I would like to give a lot of time to businesses if they're going to be negatively affected. But the evidence seems to tell us, the facts on the ground, the history of this, seems to tell us that the businesses may have a lot less to be concerned with than they're actually concerned with. So in, in the hope of, you know, being as, you know, basing this on as objective criteria as we can, I start to look at the 25-year grace period as maybe being too long, as a permanent period not to do anything about the signs. It's a whole nother generation before anything is done with the signs. If we, you know, as we see with people both here and in previous meetings, have, have... If we, you know, as we see with people both here and in previous meetings, have pushed back against any new freeway signs, we know that there in the community, there's a desire not to have freeway signs. So if that's the case, and they provide light pollution, and they're, you know, they don't give the community any extra benefit, and the question is, is maybe the city council should have the ability sooner rather than later to make the choice of selecting existing signage that it might be time to remove. So for those reasons, and in the hope of being as objective as possible as we approach this, I would, I would say, you know, maybe we should wind back the grace period, make it something short, like five years. That gives people certainly plenty of time to understand what's going on and what might be required of them. And then the city council can take its time and, you know, look, and at the end of those times, decide which signs should engage in that process, and they can wait another five years, another 10 years, another 15 years, if in their wisdom and their, you know, their financial considerations on what the right thing to do is. So, you know, basically, I am, I'm in favor of this ordinance, I think it's a good step forward. I think if I were to change anything about it, I might want to reduce that grace period in order to give the city council that flexibility, since we, in my mind anyway, we have less to worry about than we might suspect in terms of the negative impact to the existing businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm totally on board with this. I think that everything that we've done to try to work this out and come up with a 25-year grace period is in favor of those folks that have those poles and other signs, and it gives them a chance to look towards the future and plan for what's going to happen at that point. And I'm much less of agreement to shorten that period. I believe that anything that we do here, though, is going to go to the city council, and they're going to have ultimate change or agreement to what we do, and if they think that 25 years is too much, they might chime in and reduce it. But I'm of the ilk not to do it. I think it's the right amount of time. I'm only a little uncomfortable regarding the use clause, because I think that's a little nebulous. And I guess I could ask the question of Jim or Sean, that how well is that defined in this section? Because one of our speakers talked about it being unclear, and I seem to remember reading in here that if it changed from a retail to retail, that's not a change of use, but that could be a change of use. So Sean, can you clarify that a little bit for me and everybody else here? I think that's a big deal.
You know, Commissioner Smith, I think the thing is that when we write these definitions and we write codes, we have to obviously try to cover a very large spectrum of issues. And I think we worked very closely with the city attorneys to develop something that we felt was, and let me even go back one here, that covered a very wide range of scenarios, and as I said, looked at it to be both consistent with planning commission and city council approvals, but also looking at, as you're saying, the like-for-like uses, the retail-to-retail, and so on and so forth. You know, every situation is difficult. Standing up here at the dais in front of the planning commission, in front of everyone, it's hard to probably give you a definitive answer on every single situation in every single case. I think unfortunately, the best thing I can tell you is, you know, staff works very hard to work with our constituents, our business owners and our residents, and to follow the code and to provide, you know, as much guidance as we can to achieve those goals, and I think it looks like the city planner wants to also chime in.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, I think that what we have here in terms of definition, Michael, gives us as staff the ability to interpret it in a fair manner, and that's, I think, the best we can ask for in a code. Every situation is going to be different, because there was a couple scenarios that the speakers brought up. One person brought up, well, can I change from a regular restaurant to a drive-through fast food restaurant? Maybe, maybe not. We'd have to compare the two uses and see the change of intensity. The answer isn't that black and white to say for sure. Same thing with a fueling, you know, if the fuel's changed. Well, I think if you just straight-out change the fuel from ethanol to gasoline or some other kind of a new fuel source, probably not. But if the fuel source, you know, had some different kinds of effects or different kinds of usage than typical use, or the current use does, then maybe so. So again, I think this gives us the tools to look at it and make a fair interpretation on each case.
Okay, so I guess the answer to that question is that it's city staff that will review this and determine if it's a change of use or not. Is that correct? It'll be your decision.
Certainly, and if there was a question, there's always the ability in the code to bring it to planning commission for interpretation.
Okay, well, that's a good answer. Thank you. Mr. Wu?
Yes. I think we all have consensus to disallow new freeway-oriented sign, and that in order to protect the quality of life for the residents of San Clemente. The issue here is, for the use and the change of use, if there's a substantiality test to be passed, then I think that would be good enough to be incorporated into the code language. Regarding the 25-years of sunset period, I'm not in support of that. And the reason being, first of all, it doesn't give the city the flexibility it actually needs, because since it's a non-conforming use, the city legally has a right to tackle it anytime the city deems appropriate. So putting a 25 sunset grace period limit the city's capability to address that issue sooner. On the other side, I just don't see those signs are nuisance, and they are, there's no urgent need to remove it, in my viewpoint. I understand the benefits of having a beautiful, cleaner environment, but we also want to resist the desire to have a perfectly clean and sterile environment. And the city want, we need the city to be a vibrant environment and to serve not only residents who are affluent, but also travelers and tourists and the local businesses. So my recommendation is, that's the time to do the job, because some of those signs will go down over the time, and maybe the technology will render those signs, some of the signs moot over the time. That's not a force issue, and so I support the proposed proposal to disallow the freeway-oriented signs and the pole signs, but I don't support there's any sunset and amortization period in the code. Thanks.
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I'm wrong. I came in thinking I knew what direction to go on this, and I'm kind of torn at the moment. If the mall comes in and asks for sign exceptions, and they get approved, they build them, and then an ordinance like this comes into effect, what happens?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, in large part, that depends on the language of the development agreement, which I haven't, I haven't read in that, in that context, so I can't answer you with, you know, regard to that DA. If the term of a DA is expired, entitlements have been granted, and the product has been built out, and the code has subsequently changed in a manner that renders the development non-conforming, then typically it becomes non-conforming. That's your standard answer. If the DA is?
So they would be treated just like anybody else, then?
Potentially, but it depends on the terms of the DA, and I just haven't, I haven't reviewed that in light of what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, my position at this point is I'd like to get that confirmed before I can give a vote on this, because if we're saying that the quality of life is affected by the signs that are existing, and we're letting this other one proceed without an effort to stop it, I'm not comfortable with that. Seems that we should take that into account, yeah.
Okay, this topic has really no bearing on what the development agreement says.
I understand that.
And the timing doesn't matter. I don't think that's what the attorney said. I think what you're trying to say is that maybe it would be better to delay this whole process.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
No, the, and let's get that?
Once they get their signs up and operating.
Or if they get their signs approved now, or after, after this ordinance goes into effect, it doesn't matter. The same answer either way. The timing of this ordinance does not affect how this ordinance will affect them in the long term, whether they become non-conforming, non-conforming or not.
Well, I only heard that the development agreement said they have the opportunity to apply under the old code, which doesn't mean that once they're up?
Right. The development agreement will be held to the letter of the agreement, the contracts we're in with the developer, under that agreement, whether we create an ordinance now that makes them non-conforming, or we create an ordinance later that makes them non-conforming. It makes no difference. It's, so there's no reason to delay, is what I'm saying. The development agreement is what it is. It'll affect them the same way whether we do it now or do it two years from now.
Do you agree with that? I still don't understand why then that doesn't apply to, is it just a technical glitch in the law? The fact that the developer agreement that was agreed to back then doesn't say that they can keep their signs necessarily in perpetuity?
No, it's not in perpetuity at all. So if their, if their signs were approved four years ago, as opposed to four years from now, and the DA's term allowed for that, let's say it was a 20-year term, and those, that eight-year window, that eight-year window with those, that 20-year term, if this ordinance was adopted either before or after the approval, they would still potentially become non-conforming upon expiration of the term, right? They aren't, they aren't entitled to, you know, eternal vesting, right? So if the, if the code changes, certainly, they can become non-conforming. But as Jim says, the action tonight, or the action in two months, or in four months, it's not going to affect their ability to come in, apply for, and potentially receive a sign exception permit pursuant to the standards that are currently existing in the code. Whether or not they become non-conforming is not dependent upon the timing of the approval of this ordinance or non-approval.
Okay, Mr. Wu?
Yeah, I just, I had a thought regarding the freeway signs, something, I don't know if this is something we'd write into the ordinance, or maybe perhaps just recommend to city council, but Caltrans does have those signs, the kind of gas food lodging signs, and they'll put the businesses up on those signs, and they're very close to this, they're not pole signs, they're not being high, but they are very close to the side of the freeway. I, if, I have heard that the Caltrans may be considering such a sign for the outlet malls. So if, we may want to consider that if we, that if any signs get removed, any existing freeway signs might get removed, that maybe we help them with the process of having Caltrans install those kind of gas food lodging signs, or adding them to a gas food lodging sign.
I think we learned we weren't, that wasn't something we had the opportunity of getting. I think we're not.
Well, it's a Caltrans thing, but we could encourage them or get involved in the process.
I guess beyond what the discussion we're trying to get to tonight, though. I appreciate.
That's something relevant.
No, it's not particularly relevant. I mean, two other media.
I thought it might be a way to mitigate any, help mitigate concerns.
Can I just say something quick on that?
Quick?
I did talk to Caltrans about that exact same thing, and because I think it is relevant to this issue. If we start saying to folks, you're going to take the signs away, you're going to drive things to San Clemente, you're not going to see anything, you know, that does raise an issue. I talked to the Caltrans guy locally who approves these kinds of signs, and he says that the city can apply and work with Caltrans to have those signs installed and approved. So it's not that they're not available, it's not that they'll never happen, but I don't think they're going to have, I don't think they're going to have vendor names on it. I think you're going to see generic signs, that gas and food and hospital or what have you is going to be on those signs, and yes, we can do that. So, you know, I spent a lot of time with Caltrans checking that out, so I know the ground I'm on on that, and I think that that is relevant.
I believe with the outlets, they're going to have the name of the business on that. That's why I was like, I know these are smaller businesses, but there may be one sign with multiple businesses, that might be a, I know, I've seen that on the freeway.
It might be, just say outlet malls, probably, you know, on some.
Anyway, I thought it was an idea that might be worth taking off.
The actual vendor signs are, require, only allowed in remote areas, like you see going up through the Central Valley. The population density requirement, that's federal law for the interstates. So we just, we're not even eligible with the greater area basis for that type of a sign. It'd be nice to have, but it's just not allowed. You can see how that could pervert a bait, like, because if somebody along the freeway wanted a little business up, then Mr. Novella, the fisherman, would like his up too, unless it's pretty soon he up. So that's why it's pretty well limited to remote areas by population density. Commissioner Eggleston, you haven't spoken yet. We're anxiously awaiting.
Years ago, and I don't know if Caltrans has changed, Mike, that they said that San Clemente would not be eligible for those type of signs. And that was brought up at that time. So maybe they've changed, I don't know. But I have a question for you as far as, where did you hear that about the outlet center? Because I haven't heard that.
I believe it came up at the traffic subcommittee meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Jim, have you heard anything about that?
I haven't, no.
Okay, okay.
It was, it was an idea that was being bandied about, and it seemed like it was something that might, might be doable, but.
Oh, so it was not confirmed by Caltrans at that point, it was just conversation with the traffic task force?
Yeah, I think someone contacted, my memory is fuzzy on the particulars, but it had come up there, but no, there was no stake in the ground that it's going to happen at that time.
Right, okay. Several years ago, Chevron in South El Camino, near the overpass, changed from a use from a gas station to a mini mart type of thing. City required them to take down their pole sign. They did a study. The owner of that gas station did a study, and found that, in fact, it did not substantially affect his business. And they took the sign down. Guess what? Chevron's still there, and they're operating a mini mart and a gas station. I think 25 years is a very generous time for that. It gives, it gives the owners the ability to plan ahead. So I think that's, I think that's a pretty generous time. I'm going to be supportive of this and vote yes on this.
Mr. Blackwell, would you like to comment? Work your way to you.
Well, yes, thank you. I, I've got sort of the same thoughts as many of the commissioners here. I would like some clarification, however. Commissioner Wu did make a comment about the amortization, and it's my understanding that you were thinking that it's an or, amortization or legal non-conforming comes down when the change of use occurs. Is that correct?
That question about my opposition to have a 25-year grace period, that's for two reasons. The first reason is that if we state that we give them 25, 25 years grace period, it actually limits the city's capability to address the issue within that 25 years. The more important reason for me to oppose that is I believe that we should have given people a choice to use the signs and not to force the issue, and that's the time to do the job.
Okay, thank you. Well, that, that helps me a little more, and I also need one more bit of clarification from legal on this. The development agreement, just to be clear, is it any component of the development that would fall or be exempt from any, any action? Or does that development agreement need to include certain components? Say, say the developer wants to add another building, or a second story, or additional signage, would that, would that be exempt? Or would it?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I do. I'll restate the question as I understand it, which is, if there, if there are components of a project that are not anticipated in the development agreement, can the developer subsequently come and add those components to the project and have those components get the benefit of the vesting that I previously discussed? Is that, is that your question?
That's right.
Okay. So typically, a development agreement will include a section on vested rights, and those vested rights include, as I've talked about, the right to the city's ordinances as they existed upon approval. That section will also include the universe of development that gets the benefit of those vested rights. So typically, you'll see a square footage, total units, signage, et cetera. Not having this DA in front of me, I can't give an opinion on this development agreement, but again, typically, you'll see. but again, typically, you'll see the vested rights fairly clearly articulated, and any movement beyond which listed in the development agreement would require an amendment to that DA, which would require a completely new process, new public hearing, public process, potentially new SEQA. It's basically reopening the contract.
Okay. So, in this case, it's our understanding that the current development agreement does include the signage that will soon be reviewed and acted upon, correct?
That they have the right to apply for the sign exception permit, yes.
Okay. Okay. I, you know, I still stand by my feeling that certain types of signage, specifically pole signs, are truly a dying necessity. And, the, the way this, this is written by staff, I think hits, hits most of the concerns. I too am concerned with the timeline. I think 25 years with an uncertainty between notice and actual removal gives me some discomfort. I'd like to see some more definition there. And I think 15 years, if we're going to do this amortization, might as well stick with the intent here, and really make it real, in our lifetime. In 10 years, I think we'd be a little more realistic than even five or 25. That's, that's a reasonable timeframe. And I think we could, we can examine adding a specific duration, or make a recommendation for a specific duration between notice and demolition. If it's three months, if we leave it at the discretion of the deciding body, you know, in 10 years or 25 years, they could, you know, they could potentially add another 10 years, 25 years. So we're not, we're kind of defeating the intent here, really, by doing that. There's an uncertainty, and I'd like to have more certainty in this, setting it forward.
Okay, I guess just-
I'll give you, since I didn't give you anything for a head count here.
Okay, well, you had your line on.
Yeah, I've got my line on. I think I would, with everything else that I've been hashing around, I would go for the 25 years, and the way Shaun's put everything that we talked about at the previous meetings, and did a good job of it, into this resolution. I don't think it's perfect, in my mind, but it's the best thing we got at this point.
I guess I'm last. My view on this thing is I'm going to support the staff presentation. I think we've, we discussed this at the last meeting we had, we took straw votes, which, out of that straw vote came this 25-year, which the staff took for direction, that straw vote was a majority, at that time. It does give certainty for future planning. I initially felt, just leave it as is, you look at the last 20 years, and half of them have been taken down anyway. But there's a lot of concern about future certainty, and if everybody could figure out what the future was like, I'd really like to buy some stock in their thought process. But I'm going to be supportive of the staff presentation here, and the 25 years, it is certain. It, there's a balance there, because there's some city finances involved, and that's where that number, I think they arrived at it. So I'm going to be supportive of the ordinance as presented, going forward here. This is a tough issue, it's one of those things where nobody's happy, and it's just what we get, 25 cents on the hour to deal with. So that's my view on the subject. Is there any other comments to be made, or inputs? If not, we'll entertain a motion, I guess, and- Do you want to read, or? Do you have a question, or?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, well, please, by all means.
I would like to move that we adopt resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending that the city council adopt zoning amendment 15-225 slash general plan amendment 16-002, for the modifications to the sign exception permit and the sign ordinance amendments.
Just be sure to read resolution number PC 15-060.
Oh, yes, and resolution PC 15-060.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Eggleston. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I'd like to specifically state that the reason I oppose is about the 25-years sense grace period, which I-
Okay.
Other than that, I oppose.
Okay. Then the motion passes 6-1, with Commissioner Wu against. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave, I'm hacking, and I'm going to get into bed.
Do you have any comments you want us to include?
You're comfortable with what's remaining, and, okay, go home and get well. Do we want to take a slight break here?
Sorry, Mel, did you walk out? And I thought we had this one, I thought this was a done deal.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we'll, can we please hold down the noise as we move on to item 9A, and our sick committee, and please, no, Commissioner Eggleson is leaving.
You know, we should try for a record.
So, it sounds-
We're only here till 11:30 last night.
We watched, we watched the back of your head.
Jeez. I've been telling everybody, no way in hell is that going to-
Adam, we watched the back of your head, don't worry, okay. Can I ask everybody to please exit chambers and talk outside as we continue business, please, because it gets loud in here, thank you. Commissioner Eggleson, you'll be the yard monitor. I'm asking you, in possibility. With that, we'll start item 9A, new business strategic implementation program, annual review for FY 2016. Mr. Otamian, the city planners dealt you heavy cards in the last week.
Yeah. And luckily, I've been able to tackle a couple of these, and get them done. Good evening, again, Chair Brown.
Please close the door and move outside. Thank you.
And good evening, again, commissioners. Adam Otamian, tonight, I am presenting a report on the progress of the strategic implementation program. This is an annual review of the SIP for fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is also the first annual review of this program since the general plan was adopted and set out to require 300, over 300, implementation measures, which were identified by the city council as being either a priority project, meaning it has a specific deadline, a specific project, or it's an implementation measure that is an ongoing effort by city staff. The SIP is a five-year program to implement the general plan, and the SIPs generally fall under the purview of either the beaches, parks, and recreation division, community development department, or public works, or the city manager's office. The SIP does require an annual review, there's a large process that was developed, and that process is described in great detail in attachment A. Our purpose is, tonight, is step eight of that process, which will help to inform the long-term financial plan and the budget process as we go to propose the IMs for each of these departments for the upcoming fiscal year. As I mentioned, this is the first year of the SIP implement program, and, you know, being that the high-priority projects were the most important, they typically are also multi-year projects, so there have not been a lot of IMs that are technically complete at this time. Due to this, the fiscal year 2017 proposed IMs are generally continuations of what staff has been working on in this current fiscal year. However, there have been some new council directions provided to staff related to certain IMs that we have included, that we've actually begun this year, but we're including to take on next year. Additionally, there have been some IMs that staff has identified as convenient to begin at this time, because they're consistent with some other efforts, and those are also being included in the descriptions for fiscal year 2017. Finally, this annual review process gives us an opportunity to look over the SIP and make changes. They can range from complete deletions of specific IMs, to revising some of the language, or to reorganizing the, the SIP's priorities. At this time, there are not a lot of, in fact, there are no staff recommended changes to the implementation measures. However, in fiscal year 2014, the city council did provide staff with multiple revisions to many of the IMs that is included as the third attachment. And those are provided with staff's recommended changes, as provided. And with that, the, this project before you tonight is, as I noted, an annual review. This is a report on, on the progress of the SIP. And what we're looking for at this point is your concurrence with staff's proposed implementation measures for the fiscal year 2017, as well as any feedback that you have on these IMs, specifically about the ones that are proposed to be changed. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and allow any-
Do we have any questions of staff right now, and then, you know?
I'd just like to chime in a little bit on this. I think this is a, the SIP is really an important component of the general plan. I think we're lucky as a city that we decided to make this component part of it, because it makes your general plan a living and breathing document. And really, this is more about a report that, to keep staff on point and accountable for continuing to implement the general plan. And if you look at the breadth of the things that are being done by the different departments within the city in terms of the implementation, you can tell that San Clemente takes its implementation of our general plan seriously. And we're tackling a large portion of those implementation measures already in, what is it, the second year of the general plan's adoption. So, just wanted to add now, on to what Adam already covered.
Mr. Commissioner Ruhman, you like to-
Yeah, I kind of wanted to ask Jim, I just, and Adam, I-
You can ask him.
Whichever one you doesn't want to answer the most, so. I want to make sure that we're on track, because this is really the first time we're doing this. I think last year, we kind of did a prioritization and made, gave that recommendation to city council. And this, but this is the first time that we're kind of doing this, and I want to make sure we're getting you-
You're last year.
What you, what you need. You want us to go, sort of go through this and say, you know, ask questions about specific things we're wondering about, or if we think something is unclear, to get that to staff? What is it kind of that you want from us, in this?
Well, like I said, this is the first, this is the first review, meaning that we've, we have completed one year of a five-year process. The way the priorities are broken down, none of the IMs are technically required to be completed within one or two years. They're all three-year, five-year, or some unspecified-
One to three, three to five, and five to seven, and ongoing.
Yeah, that's really the way it's broken down. So, after the first year, you know, the report is basically that we're on track, there's nothing that has come up that has really sidetracked any of these high-priority projects. When we get to, you know, next year, and especially the year following, we would definitely, you know, be in a better position to talk about being on track or off track. But like I said, some of these projects are so multi-year, that, you know, it's the fact that, I think there's one high-priority project right now that was identified as actually completed.
So, how, how are we going to add value to the process here, that, how the planning commission, that's kind of-
Yeah.
Well, we're, I think Adam's right, this is the first year, so it's kind of more of a report to you of what we're doing, than a feedback year. But, that said, if you see anything on here that, you know, after your review of the different implication measures, that you want us to start, you know, thinking about, and any suggestions on sequencing as things begin to drop off, you know, because right now, our workload is at capacity. But come next year, we're going to start having some more ability to take more of these on. So it would be good to see or hear any kind of direction you have on what you think, you know, is important to the community, and where we should be looking for, you know, the upcoming years on implementation.
Let me-
So that would be the feedback.
Yeah, okay. Let me, let me do some procedural here, I think we should maybe open public comment and close it, and to get that little legality out of the way, if I could, and then we can proceed on with discussion. And so I'll open the public comment, and see if anybody wants to speak, and see no one, I'll close public comment. And so now we can, I kind of agree with Commissioner Ruhman, having, three of us having, and some of you guys have been on here or so, but having lived with this through the whole general plan for four, five years, we kind of, you know, we're kind of in it. And then the, and what we had last year to work with, you know, we, okay, starting at ground zero, how are we going to sequence all 300 of these that got thrown in, and then, we commented on like combining some things, because there was three ordinances in about 40 locations, which now, with this exception, just the council, I think, has come up with on these changes. I would comment that, that when I got the report, it's difficult, the way it's formatted going forward, to tell where the start and end dates are with everything, I mean, we have a, 22 pages of, it's ongoing, it started, maybe started in 2016. And so, what, as we transition, I would suggest going forward, next year, to format a report that in fact, we start looking at end dates and start dates, and bar charts, or somehow that we can make a reasonable decision about it, and analyze about it. I can kind, I went through all 20 pages, and, because I've lived it for five years, I kind of made a rational thing, yeah, things are kind of started. Yep, I can tell when you're going to start the year of the design guidelines, after all the specific plans, because we live with it, community development. I really don't have a good feel for, you know, public works, and where they're going with some of their sewer plans, and all that stuff, you know, it's just not apparent to me with some of the implementation, as the way the report is, I guess you're right, we're one year into it, everything's in progress. For the newer people, it's probably a very difficult report to discern, it was difficult for me, having lived with it, of something, because I had the original, what we baselineed last year, and I emailed you, like, okay, we made an issue about undergrounding, and it's not even in this report anymore. And so I'm, so which ones of the 300 are in the report, you know, I mean, and so, you know, you see one, you kind of get a little, okay, what else am I missing? So, I think you're doing okay, I think we're off to a good start, but I think we need to give this type of a report in the next out years a little more, because we're going to start getting completed, ongoing, just started, we need to get a format that, as we look at 300 of these things, and the council, I think, is going to probably have the same question going forward, too, as we get going on. Because my, if I recall, is a living, rolling document, that over time, new implementations should be put into this bucket, to make sure, so this is not a static thing, and we just work it down to zero. We work off 25 of them, and new things come up. And there has to be a process of, these mostly came from the G-PAC, and then through the whole public process, and then from there, we, the planning commission, worked it. So there's got to be a new front-end process kind of evolved here, too, I mean, staff will have to go out of your own place. I would suggest next year, like you've been doing for the last several years, because you will present to us, for the new people, the capital investment program, and we check it for general plan consistency. So every sewer line, every road that gets done, is going to be presented to us, and it's a really good format, you can kind of tell what you want to do, and what years is going to be phased in. is going to be phased in, when you're going to start it, when you're going to end it. Okay, we're going to shift it because, this is a very useful point. And the other thing about it was, I really liked we evolved to, after I came on the commission, is we start off with a study session so we can really hammer it out a lot better. And I would suggest that for next year as a study session.
Be it ourselves.
So, we can kind of sit there amongst, you know, in that relaxed format and kind of hammer things out, and then bring it back for a more formal debate, like we will with the capital investment plan. There's kind of some suggestions going forward. So, to me, I went through all 23 pages, okay, yes, yes, no, okay, sorted. I see the process, I've looked at it. I'm kind of comfortable with what you've got laid down. I see the council directions here. These are all logical, it's combining all these tree ordinances and everything else all over the place. And so, I think that's useful going forward, so I'm kind of comfortable where you have it. But for the other people here, it's kind of like, wow, where are we at, where we started, where are we going? And so, if you'd like, gentlemen, I know it's getting late, but we could do a page turn if you have questions on a specific item you went through, or, or we can just go left to right and say, oh, on page 5, 10, 15, and 20, I've got concerns. I mean, we can make this as long and brutal as we want, or we can make it fairly simple. And so, I suggest going, you know, kind of quickly through it. I'll do a page turn if you'd like, or whatever. So, Mr. Buck, will you have another question?
Just a comment and recommendation. I would just, I like the page turn idea. I'm fond of that, happy to do it. Might be helpful, especially for the new guys. But just generally speaking, just looking at the SIP annual review process, attachment A, and yes, I agree, this is an amazing mechanism. Not every city does this, okay? And it's a great way to keep it alive, and yes, we're very fortunate, especially if it gets the backing it needs.
When you look at the old general plan we worked with and things we were in there that never got touched or looked at.
Yeah, stuff will sit on the shelf and just grow old. I mean, it's amazing, and it's very sad that that happens. I'm excited about this. So, but the, getting back to the annual review process, I would love to see a section added to this. Apparently, it goes to the city council for review and action, right? So, you're going to clean it up, and at the end of the year, there's going to be a package presented. I think it'd be fantastic, with along the lines of what you're talking about, to see any components that are specific to land use or zoning, just come back to us, so we can just look at it one last time before, we can clean it up, we can speak to those items that we often, it's in our wheelhouse, really. And maybe there's a last-minute thing that maybe got overlooked, or it could use a little extra polish before it rolls out. That would be my suggestion, just to add that, just before the city council places it.
This gets cranked into the city council pretty quickly. I think you probably don't...
Very quickly.
Because it all has to fit, we all fill it with a lot of financial...
Right. And I love this kind of feedback, because we did the same thing with the CIP, remember, Don?
Yeah.
We weren't so good the first year, and we got better.
There was somebody that...
And I'm not claiming that we're perfect here.
There was somebody that discovered it pretty good.
Somebody.
I have some quick question. When you say high priority, does that mean it's not ongoing and that waiting to be started?
High priority, or the high priorities are things that are one-time projects, so there's a dead, there's an end date. The ongoing are things that we do as a matter of business.
Okay.
Like, the historic preservation program is an ongoing program that we continue to do.
It feels like you have so many high-priority projects, I don't know how you can handle that, and a very few low-priority projects, and they're not, they will never get there, I guess.
See, what really happened, and that's why this report, when we first did it a year ago, first CNN, is color-coded, and high priority was red, was to be undertaken within three years of point of documents. And then, medium priority was within five, that it started within five years of general plan. And the low priority was five plus, and then the blue was ongoing. So, well, you didn't get the report, other than the exceptions, I kept, this is last year's report, this is all 36 pages of everything. You can see by blue and red, and we worked all this, okay, that's red, fine, okay.
And we changed some.
And we changed some. Staff came into this and said, okay, we want to lower ourselves down upfront. Some of this stuff, particularly community development, was triggered by law, just the fact you adopt the general plan. All this other stuff starts waterfalling on you, and they just have a big stack on their desk for a couple years so we get through it, in addition to the local coastal plan and the other efforts. But what this really drew in is it drew in the other parts of the city. Beaches, Parks, and Recs is in it, and you see a lot of healthy issues to that part. Fett Shepherd got assigned to them by the general plan, and eat healthy living and fancy foods and all that. And then, Public Works' draft was dragged into it. They came to the party with the general plan, writing chapters after we'd been at it for a couple years. So, this format is more visual, it says, okay, but I think going, maybe this is not going to be useful next year.
You know, I think...
But it would certainly help these gentlemen out of what the intent was, but it's because they're really issue, because we're already one year into the general plan right now.
Yeah.
And so, I'm just saying going forward, we had to put more thought into it. The SIP thing, we've got pretty well smoothed out.
Yeah.
But this is a first, and I think, I think this is a good session. I think you're there, I think we have some going forward, the council, they're going to sort it out, but I think they might have the same questions, as you're going forward, that you might want to...
So, some of the items are high priority because of the urgency, and some others are high priority because they are important things to do. So, maybe I'd like to know what the reason of this high priority is.
As Don pointed out, last year, we went to the planning commission with the whole strategic plan, all the implementations, but no priorities on them at all.
You had a suggestion, you had this...
Well, we staff, staff and the consultant of the general plan made suggestions of what the priorities were, and then we presented it to you, and then, and you made recommendations and changes, and ultimately, the city council made the final decision on those. And that's where we got the direction to change some of them and consolidate and all that. So, would we have liked to see less high priorities, the staff? Yeah, I think so, but, you know, like you said, like you pointed out, they're all parts of the community.
Those are the words in this report you guys came up with.
So, it's just, I think it's the nature of when you first adopt the general plan, there's a lot of excitement and a lot of priorities that were brought up through the process that were important to the community, and that's how we got that many.
We reduce the rhythm a little more evenly, so high, medium, and low, each has about a third instead of making majority of them high priority.
Where were you last year?
I know, we kind of said they wanted to be glutton for punishment, we're okay with that. They're the experts, we're just the part-time help.
They said they were bored and didn't have much to do, so...
But some of it's triggered by law, anyway, and a lot of that stuff that the Public Works guys do.
And actually, if you look at a lot of those, a good proportion of these are related to the zoning ordinance update. So, we're capturing, you know, probably 25 of them in just the zoning ordinance update.
And specific plans and all that stuff. And then, appropriately, you know, after that's done, you're going to start on, working on the urban designs criteria and all that stuff.
And a lot of that is actually still included. So, we, so all of the high priorities were assigned to departments, and they're on that list. Those are all of the high priorities.
So, where did undergrounding?
So, for this year, since none of them have really changed, and if anything's changed, it's that a couple additional IMs have fallen into our lap. I didn't think it was really necessary to go through the entire SIP again, because since we're still working on the immense load that we had last year, it would be, you know...
I'm just saying going forward, we need to see...
So, next year, you know, being two-thirds of the way into the, you know, high-priority things, which should be completed in three years, I would definitely want to bring back, it's not completed, but...
High priority is to be undertaken within three years of general plan adoption.
Yeah, and there are some that are...
And then, medium was to be undertaken within five years. So, that's what was, that was the trigger point from last year. So, not to be completed within three years, but to be undertaken in three years. So, the staff really has more flexibility with this plan than you're actually talking to, Adam, so I don't want to, you know, you don't need to...
Well, no, it's not, it's not a matter of panicking, but it's just, if we have, you know, timeframes on when things need to be initiated, you know, if we're not initiating those projects, you know, in enough time to complete them, in time to initiate the next round, that's when we would want to start, you know, investigating priorities.
That should be the purpose of the report in a way, is, okay, I got to slip this out of the year because, you know, I mean...
And we're still in a position where we are doing that.
And so, you need to, so that the budget can shift and...
Not unlike the five-year CIP, you know, a lot of times, we'll have things in the CIP that are four years out, and we'll stay four years out the next year because we just haven't gotten done with the ones that we're doing, or the funding isn't available to do that program.
They're just going to start repaving Los Molinas after the undergrounding, and we're going to repave it after the undergrounding, and that took three years longer, so the pavement down there by the Boys and Roascop was supposed to have been done four years ago, but appropriately, wait till PGND gets all the poles out and everything, gets sawed through the road. So, there's a SIP item that actually slid to the right, and it was smartly done. It depended on what, but yeah, that's the problem I don't see it capturing this report going forward, is the dynamics in it, because there's going to be, there's going to be a VRBL thing that comes along that destroys your schedule, you know, or assigns...
I haven't noticed.
Yeah, I know, that's exactly why I use that example. So, you know, that thing gets onto your plate, other stuff that's in the SIPs is going to shift, right? And we have to capture that so you can go to the council and say, okay, we're shifting to the right because staff implementations and stuff like that. And there's some that are called out in here, like, I think Beaches, Parks, and Recs have got, they've got their plan for volunteers done, but they're waiting staffing to back somebody to actually run the plan that's in the, so they're, so obviously, they're sliding out right. Okay, you have some questions going through this?
Uh, no, I'm ready.
Can I, okay, can I actually have...
I'm high-firing under the body.
Okay, you're good with the body, Jim, you have...
Yeah, I, in terms of going through page by page, I think that's great, I'm happy to, but I actually have, I think, three items that are more general, and it actually, you know, knocked most of what I have page by page off, so...
Okay.
With your indulgence, a few of these are more, I guess, presentation-type of things. But the first one is under attachment A, you talked about the criteria to evaluate these measures, and you list eight criteria. One of them is ease of implementation, and I'll just put a little flag in there, because I know, at least in the areas that I work in, it's a bit of a danger in picking the stuff that's easy first, because you end up getting, it looks like there's a lot of progress made, and then you do the things that are risky, and the things you, that are kind of unknown, and things we haven't done yet, and all of a sudden, you know, all that stuff takes a whole lot more time than you expected. So, one thing I, you know, recommend is looking at that like, well, maybe we should be doing some, starting some things now that involve some unknowns, so that when they get uncovered, we'll have a much better idea of how long it's going to take us. So, that's just one advice from my own history. I also recommend in the form of the table that you gave us, you might want to add a column that talks about the, just a bullet point or two on the accomplishments that have been made over the past year on that item, because some, obviously, nothing will get done because, you know, you're booked up, you're working on other things. Other things will be halfway through, but it'd be good to know that, you know, some report's been created, or, you know, some, you've submitted something for some money somewhere, things like that. So, that would be good in terms of us, you know, tracking it a little bit better. And there are a couple of areas that I just noticed that either there was no status, or the status was a repeat of the description, or there was just a label that it wasn't started yet. A little bit more would be helpful there, so it's just not kind of blank. If it's not started, that's okay, but, you know, when do we expect it to get started? It's going to be started in 2017 or something like that. Again, just to give us a little bit better picture of the whole thing.
Consistency, a lot of them do actually state that.
Yeah, a lot of them say good stuff, but some of them, you know, some percentage of them don't. So, anyway, those are the high-level things that I had, and I'll wait till we get to the pages.
You're the percentage of the...
Well, some of the, from Public Works, is a good one, it just says being done, you know, in progress, in progress.
TDD.
Historical preservation, you may remark, label it high priority, but there's not much we can do.
Yep, it's high priority pending a development of somebody to do something.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's devolver dependent on the city.
Yeah. And my other...
Accomplishment, I think, with this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, you can just see, you know, it's kind of like...
I'm here.
More of the same, and certainly, there's positive movement in things, and it's hard for me to clean it.
My other global comment is, this commission had a priority, G-PAC had a priority, which was the undergrounding. I know Public Works has kind of resisted that, and all of a sudden, I can't find it in the report anywhere. I know it was an implementation measure, it was going to be an ongoing business last year, we upped it to high priority. I think council slid it back down to medium, but it was a priority to come up with an undergrounding plan, starting in X amount of years, and I can't find it anywhere in the report. The big driver, I think, for the G-PAC was people, and they want, what drives underground is you get more lights on the street, and the people want their streets safer, and that would feed to the dark skies audience, also to make sure that everything's copacetic. You know, like, Los Molinas, you know, where they're going to get 10 or 12 new streetlights down there with this underground. So, it's not, and so, I think Public Works is on the hook to come up with a plan, and so it just disappeared anywhere in this report, anywhere. And it was one of, it was page 13 of 20 from last year's report, if you'd like to look at last year's.
No, I looked that up. Okay. Unfortunately, you are correct about the city council knocking it down to a medium priority.
But it didn't disappear off the report, is it still in the...
It is still in the general plan.
But it's not in this report here.
No, it's not.
What else is missing? How many?
Well, I think this has, of more than 300 implementation measures, there's only approximately 170 or so that we have been directed to initiate at this point.
That's a high priority.
That's high priority, and that's...
Or ongoing, you've got ongoing.
Or ongoing.
So, out of 300 implementation measures, we're only doing 170 right now.
That's all.
Low priority, that's not necessary.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, just to, I mentioned, in the ongoing years, we shouldn't come back with the whole package for you to reevaluate the priorities, because after time, you know, priority, it might have been a low priority five years ago, becomes a high priority because the things change or conditions change. You know, sea level rise changes, some issue with, you know, improvements on the beach or, yeah, right.
Outlet moment. Okay, so, okay, enough? You want to do a real quick page turn, or you guys have enough? Are you just glutton for punishment, or you want to go...
Let's do a quick page turn.
Okay. Start with page one, any comments? Get it over with, get it, you know? No comments on page two, anything? Here's a high priority from Beaches, Parks, and Urban Design, National Land Escape, not started, BPNR and CDD, and so that status is, I put down, let's start. It's like, global comment. Can Rouen, that's, okay, tell us the 2017 or 18, top of page two, element number 27, it's high priority. I guess in the first three years, it should be started, we're on year two, right? So, maybe it's 2017?
Yeah, that would be a big effort and an expensive one, so it's just, right now, I can't get any time.
Plan for senior quarter, which provides policy year two. Then, there's something we should go along with, and maybe adjust, go to the council and recommend, move it out, a high priority.
Um, I think that I would put it at the lower end of the high priorities, because of just the effort, and the big efforts that we have now, so...
I understand, but I'd say that it's going to start in 2018 or 2017, or, I'm just anticipating questions I might get from council members too, so going forward.
Right now, it's a no. I don't know the answer to that.
Between Beaches, Parks, and Recs, you guys, you don't know. Page three, any comments, anybody?
Oh, I do, just a question, clarification, item five. So, this is, there's a hospital advisory committee working with those folks now?
Correct. They, the city council formed an advisory committee. They're the only ones that have the right to...
City managers, well, that's...
But they have, city councils are the ones that can initiate committees and task forces and all that, like dark skies and all that.
Well, that's interesting, just, you know, recent discussions on this have been pretty hot, and I don't recall any mention of that sort of liaison body.
They formed one last year, the council did. Hospital advisory, task force work group, bringing stakeholders together. Tony Struthers, who manages the hospital, along with, Wes Calhoun is a doctor who used to own the hospital, was really there with the hospital, I sold to you, so that's an ongoing group.
And this implementation measure is one of the ones that's... And this implementation measure is one of the ones that's supposed to be changed. The language, the city council wanted to revise the words there to the city, to reflect that...
Right.
You know, this is defined, you know, to help them figure out what the city needs, not to have the city identify what they need.
I have a little question on the number... If I'm a casey mayor, now, would you affect me eight twice, like five twice?
You use them because of the different departments.
Well, two, eight are both full city manager.
Two eights.
Probably from different elements of the general plan.
Yeah. One's public services, and one is economic development. The way it was originally set out is made by the specific chapters of the general plan.
When we want to have a lot of specific implementation measure, the number is not only reference. How do we...
Yeah.
Well, the way that this is organized is first by lead department. So each department, all of theirs are put together, and it's done that way because there's a lot of coordination with the other departments figuring out what they need, and it's easiest if I can just give them their chunk. The next way it's organized is by the element itself. So for the middle of page three, where it starts with the city managers, you got the economic development element, items listed, and then they are listed in numerical order.
So if I say economic development, item eight, how will these affect?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. All right, anything on the page three to page four?
I have, in page four, number 32, there is nobody listed as responsible for these city-sponsored mayor's walks, so I think either we wanna put the mayor in there, or maybe the person or the role on staff that sets these up or makes recommendations about when we should have walks and things like that.
City manager, right? He's on staff.
Yes, maybe it's the city manager, but... Or maybe it's the mayor who says, "I wanna have a walk now," or I know.
They're having it this Saturday.
Oh, okay. But I'm just saying, somebody should be... It's like the only one where there's not some role responsible. This is number 32, under Beaches Park and Recreation, page four.
And you mean in the description?
Status department involvement.
It's not...
That column.
Yeah, currently, there's none. Some of the city manager's stuff, we're still waiting for a little bit of feedback.
Okay.
I believe this is one that they're looking at, but there will be something updated here.
I think the city managers...
You said you noticed that the status needs to be updated.
Yeah.
Well, there was a... Probably a notice, probably a counter, like a law. She's a walker, it's something.
Yeah, she's a walker. She's having one this Saturday for, if you wanna look at the...
That's not the mayor.
Well, she started it when she was the mayor, she's been mayor twice, and we had lots of...
Well, she has more similar activities to encourage her husband to participate in community events.
Okay. Page five, I think it is. Here is growth management, item four, the very bottom of the page, with LAFCO for disturb influence. It's high priority. This is the involvement, this is community development, not started three years out, so I guess you're changing that to from high priority to medium priority? Is that what you're saying? By the comment?
No, that's...
I know that there's some plans, so I'm gonna get the status updated.
LAFCO. A lot of that, I think, resides up in the city managers, almost, definitely.
Yeah, and also with Cecilia, so...
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
And also on this page, item 32, mobility to the complete streets, by four months and by four weeks. That's the ongoing.
Because the priority's...
Whatever that means.
Where's that assistant city manager when you wanna prod him?
Yeah, that's what we've received from them so far. I would assume, though, that what this implies is that they're... They've begun the work of this...
You want me to send an email tomorrow morning to the assistant city manager, encouraging better inputs?
No. Hey, you could ride your bike here, and then we'll just write completed on that.
Wind it, just air it up a little bit. Okay, let's... On to seven. Eight.
Eight, yes, I've got two. Clarification, urban design, item number 11. What do we mean by conduct public hearings? How are we envisioning that? How would that be designed? It's conduct public hearings or design charretts. But which forum would those public hearings be in?
Meeting in the community center of negotiation.
Just a notice?
Page, sorry, let me get my way.
Page eight, bottom, urban design, number 11.
I thought you were talking about a meeting, not a public...
I'm sorry, I meant to say public meetings. So how would...
That's the way they do it.
Just we're gonna just notice a public meeting to go over...
They did it for the housing element, we met down at the community center of negotiation for the housing element review, they had to go public, I suppose they'll do it.
Once we take on the task, then we'll set up the program that includes different options on how to engage the public. We don't really know exactly, we just know that we would have public outreach, and oftentimes we'll try and set the meetings at certain locations. Sometimes, there's a variety of ways that we do it. We have walking charretts, we have, you know, kinda like what Dana Point recently did with reform base code, that kind of thing.
So I'm just thinking out loud here, it just kinda makes sense, like in a wheelhouse thing, with the architectural subcommittee would be involved in that piece of it, only because there's a...
Yeah, of course.
We're invited to it.
We're invited to it.
Okay.
That's pretty standard.
That's great. And then the next comment on the same page. As Jim mentioned earlier, the dark skies task force is in effect. Three of us met, we're meeting in tomorrow to do a little field trip. It's very exciting. Looking at the dark skies task force, it reads, "Dark skies task force created to review potential zoning standards." I think we know what we're doing, right? We're creating zoning standards. That's what we're doing.
For lighting.
Yeah, so can we revise that, just to be specific?
I don't know.
Review potential, yeah.
I mean, we are, that's what we're gonna do. That's the purpose of this thing, right?
So, yeah, we are, we're actually gonna be creating zoning standards, not just reviewing, so...
That's...
I'm sure we'll review too.
I'm gonna blame this on Cliff Jones.
On page nine, any comments? Page 10.
No, what was the text you gave? I have one for page 10.
Dark skies task force...
Created.
Create zoning standards related to... Is that what you're writing?
Yeah, we're creating zoning standards.
Recommend.
Create zoning standards.
Should be recommended.
Actually, maybe recommended, because we don't pass it. If we don't write it, we don't pass it, so...
Okay.
Dark skies, recommend.
Yes, there you go. Page 10. Anybody?
I got one for 10. This is under Governance, number six. I was wondering about the status of the web-based general plan. Last I saw, and it's been a little while since I looked at it or followed up on it, but it kind of, sorta died on the vine a little bit. It had work to do, but it wasn't getting done, so...
All the links are connected.
Yeah.
Guys, that is gonna be undertaken this year, and Chris has got it on his list of things to do fairly soon. I mean, I think around March, we'll start actively working on it again.
After the zoning amendment and a few other things?
Well, that was the thing. We don't wanna go through all that work and not have a general plan that, you know, that was actually completed, and now that we have it, for the most part.
Yeah.
There's not gonna be major, you know, changes, but the last... We were waiting for the last go-around to get approved, so now we're back to focus on it.
There's some links that still don't work. Is that what you're gonna do? Okay. On page 11.
Can I take that as a volunteer to help?
A volunteer?
You know, I would, but I'm already on three subcommittees, man.
Page 13.
Yeah, let's see, what did I have on 13? This is number eight, that was the big one there. Oh, when I was reading this, we talked about the access program for Capo Shores was in the LCP. And when we did the LCP, as I recall, we kind of, we punted on the Capo Shores stuff because of, you know, the ongoing issues with it. So has something been added, or has there been specific resolutions made to the issues that were going on at the time with Capo Shores? Are they gonna be in the LCP, I guess?
Remains to be seen, depends on what the city council's direction is, but one of the options is to white hole Capo Shores altogether, and let those issues be resolved, and then put it back in once they're resolved. That's the current thought.
That's an option right now. Go look at the staffing board from last night, that they...
Or we'll get direction on how exactly we're gonna deal with it and address the issues.
So this is, so I'm just thinking, this is not... Maybe the Capo Shore should be removed, or a modifier put on that, because it sounds like it might not actually be in the LCP, at least as first approved. Is that, do I have that right?
It may be. What number of coastal are you talking about?
This is number eight.
Up in the top.
This is page 13, number eight, and it's kinda right at the top, at the very first text. Access management programs for coastal shores and the private beach areas north of Capo Shores, et cetera, et cetera. But since we, you know, kind of drew a circle around that and set it aside...
That's a good point. I think it's a good global point. We need to relook at all these coastal implementation measures to adjust them based on how the LUP is being drafted.
Okay. Good. Page 14. 15. 16. 17. 18. 20. 21. 22. 23. 24. 25. 26. Anything else?
Do you have a GIs? Just a...
I don't recall a GIs in here.
There's not a GIs in page 13.
But that is a big... When we mentioned that, we were gonna come into a study session to give you a report on...
Something you're doing.
Yeah. Right now, we're doing, we're integrating our GIs with our in-house kind of, we call track-it system, so that the two are compatible, and then we... Because we're, our daily business, and when we're, you know, entering permits and different information, we want that to go directly into our GIs system. So that's a big effort that's going on right now.
Is it not part of the implementing measure?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if there's one.
It is not. I never put GIs in there. That was a separate staff initiative, you gotta cancel and launch on to. Might be something you'll throw in there as a new item, but I don't know what's...
If I come through our policies, that there's gotta be a general plan policy related to our, you know, IT system and all kinds of...
Yeah, it probably is, but I know there's no specific GIs.
Do you have a plan to make it available to the public any time soon?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, one of the major points of doing it.
When do you expect it to be up?
I don't know the answer to that. But that's why we're having the study session, because there's people that are working on it. Do you know the answer?
Chris, one time, sent us an email saying it's there. After a long time, I tried to...
No, it's pretty soon that we're gonna have, you know, just the basic map information out there, because Chris keeps on bragging about it, so...
Okay. Well, he's still got, he's still got a load of all the ranches in there for the zoning men and the partners, there's half a square mile of the city by geographical area that he hasn't gotten.
I'll report back to the commission on that, because I really, I just don't know the answer, but Chris does.
Okay. Mr. Smith, you have a question?
I do have a question. There's a lot of stuff in here. I went through it several times. I didn't see anything on the Poche Beach Action Plan in here.
That's a capital improvement program, and not an implementation measure.
It doesn't fit into this report?
No, you'll see that in the SIP.
Okay.
And the SIP, we should get, we have Mr. Otamian, whenever he can, sees the light of day from VRBO and other...
Yeah, that actually started, that was implemented before the general plan was adopted, so that's...
Yeah.
There's no direction to do that, they've already, they already started doing that.
Yeah, we should see that as an ongoing project in the SIP when it presents to us here in a couple of months.
Good.
It should be April, I guess, or like that.
Yeah.
March. Motion to...
I just have one last question on, regarding the, on this right here, I just caught this, the update of the tree inventory and include trees and public landscapes, landscapes of historic significance, and then the note was identifying historic trees seen as problematic, and it wasn't included over here. So I'm wondering, why was that? Why would we abandon... Because it was a low priority, is that why?
I don't know.
Yes. No, that's correct. It's not on the list, it's not on Attachment B, because it's not a high priority or an ongoing, so staff hasn't initiated it yet. It's on this list, because city council, going through all of the implementation measures, identified this as having problematic language, trying to figure out what is a historic tree.
Right, okay.
Can we get historic to you, but not to me, so?
Heritage, historic, old, neat. Okay, but it is, it is on the table, and it's something that is focused on, just not right here.
Yeah, technically, yeah. It's still part of the SIP, but as this document shows, the direction given to staff was to delete this from the, from the general plan.
That particular item?
That particular IM, yes.
Well, the implementation measures aren't part of the general plan, right?
No, there's...
They were adopted by resolution.
Right, so we can change those without a general plan.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I will make a motion unless there's other questions or comments.
No, let's make a motion.
Okay, then I will move that we, the planning commission, concur with staff's proposed directions for the fiscal year 2017 S I P with the comments as we have made during the session.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wu, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes six zero. Six oh, pardon me. With that going on, we have another old business, reporting commissioners and staff.
The lighting subcommittee had its first meeting, I guess, two weeks ago, and we tend to meet usually once a month. This month is a little unusual, we are meeting tomorrow night, anyone, I can't say you're welcome, actually, ground act issues. But the three of us are going to be going on a tour at night to take a look at some areas of town with, both with potential lighting issues, and also potential dark skies benefit, so that we can kind of get a benchmark and get a sense of, you know, where we might need to go. And that's where we are right now.
Okay, for graphic national, which was, most of that last Monday, but it was a holiday, and so it's been scheduled for next Monday, and the agenda's posted out there for that. And we're going to continue to look at La Pata, there is a La Pata hike this Saturday, if anyone is interested, you can meet at the top of Camino Rio, which we just discussed ad nauseam about a week or so ago, as far as, you can review the road yourself before we go up the trail for traffic test, coastal advisory. Yep.
About that lighting, have you looked at the, the public center lighting and all of that?
That is going to be one of the areas that we are looking at, right? We're kind of looking at sort of the, sort of eastern part of the city, little open space type areas, and we're going to be looking at the outlet areas, down into North Beach, then we're going to go into like downtown, and then we'll go into Spotten Downtown Parking Area, and then we're going to go down into Valencia, and actually the San Mateo Campgrounds, because those are two areas where they're kind of darker areas of town. See if we can see the distinction, if it's not too overcast.
What I found interesting about the comments that we brought this year is that regarding that kind of light, maybe not so much dark, but I see it starts as more like light pollution in your face, so you're looking at that as well?
Yeah, that is, that is an important aspect of this, is things like light trespass, glare, stuff like that, so that's all part of the dark skies or the lighting ordinance, call it what you will, so.
If you go look at the sharpness, terrible street lighting.
Coastal advisory committee?
Question, on the, I remember once you mentioned it's possible, three-way exit lane, something like a shop. That's a part of that side. Is that what, last year?
That was a, before we named the, the street at the Alamo, one of the options was for Mr. Hermosa to have different names, you know, at the point where the freeway interchange is, to change that one stretch that went from the freeway exits to the intersection with Pico, to like, you know, San Clemente Outlet Mall, or something like that. So that way, the exit sign would say the street name.
Yes.
But that was decided not to, the city council decided against that.
Okay.
And when do you expect this sign application to be in front of a planning machine?
It really depends on the applicant's ability to make the application complete. So we're waiting on information, thanks.
Coastal advisory committee met on January 14th. In that meeting, we discussed the environmental sustainability grant considerations, there are three that add up to approximately $3,000, and there were three grants issued to San Clemente High School, two to the high school, and one to the SC Task Force. And those funds are going to come out of the lean ocean and clean ocean and water conservation accounts type of. We also discussed NPDES, National Public Outreach Update and Recommendations. This program is really neat. You guys might start to notice this, that when you do a Google search, for example, and you put in water conservation, you might get a little pop-up, it's a little gnome, has anybody seen that? Okay, that's a gnome, you see, you know about, okay, of course you do. He's our, he's our water conservation mascot, his name is Norman, G N O R, he's a gnome, and this is reaching tens of thousands of people. It's an amazing way to get the word out, and apparently it's been quite, it's quite successful, and, you know, they plan to expand this program a little more as time goes on. We also discussed standard replenishment. It was a brief discussion, it was a lot of the same discussion, Tom Bonniget was not able to attend our meeting, unfortunately, but we're hoping he'll be at the next meeting and present some new information to us, just kind of give us a status of.
There's a round town that he and Kim Brown filmed recently, a couple of months ago, it was very good.
Very informative, yes, and the committee did talk about that, one of committee member Ambrose was just very insistent on finding a way to get that out to more people, more in public, maybe inviting them to some meetings, just trying to wrap our minds around how to get that information out to folks. And again, Tom Bonniget may be at our next meeting in February to give us sort of an update where we're at. We talked about some other mechanisms to increase revenue to help with the beaches, such as extending the meters at the parking lots, so there's no stopping point, just continue using them as we can capture some of that revenue. We talked about bacteria monitoring, which I get some of the details on that, but generally speaking, no major change in that, minor spikes in there, but overall, no major change. And again, some of the future items would include the standard replenishment update. Trafalgar Canyon Outlet Pre-Design Project is another one we've been waiting for.
It's been, she's kicked the can in it, Mary Audrey's kicked the can in the road about nine or 10 months ago.
Well, hopeful, I, I've been just reading this one line now, or since I've been on the committee, and I know very little about it, I'm looking forward to learning more. If that one does not make the February agenda, we're going to hear a report on the condition of the pier and recommended improvements, which I'm looking forward to.
They're starting to do a study on that.
Next meeting will be on February 11th.
Okay, let's see, anything on future agendas, Jim? I don't like that coming out as far as, looks pretty thin on the future agenda manual here. I think you and Mr. Eggleston, that talked to Beaches Park and Recreation about dogs on the beach.
As, as private citizens, yes, we both gave comment to the Beaches Park and Recreation.
They're going to work that issue, but eventually, that will come to you for concurrence, because of Coastal Advisory Committee did it last time, they discussed it two, three years ago. So, but I'm sure that's four, five, six months out, if our Beaches Park and Recreation, they're trying to get their arms around it, and they're going to form a subcommittee or whatever.
Yeah, okay. So if there's nothing else, I will move, we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on February 3rd, 2016, in City Council Chambers, the City Hall located at 100 Avenue, Procedio, San Clemente, California.
Motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
Second by Blackwell, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes six zero, and nobody opposed. Good luck in your crews.